Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for your indulgence for a few minutes while we're getting the television situation squared away and some paperwork. So I'd like to welcome you to the planning board this evening. We have a few orders of business very quickly before we get into our public hearing, so if you'll just indulge us for a few moments. Board members, you have an agenda in front of you at this point, and I would appreciate a motion to approve that agenda.
Catherine, did you get the one that was going over? Forty-four fifteen is going over to January. I spoke to him this afternoon. He doesn't have anything ready.
It is? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Where'd she go?
It's Kyberg's.
The auction house thing?
Yeah. He said that's going over to January. Yep.
All right, so with that modification?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda with forty-four fifteen. The special permit's going over to January, what?
Six.
Eleven.
January eleventh.
And he said he would come in and sign an extension, but you have to just remind him.
Okay.
Second. So the motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. You have a number of minutes before you at this point. The only thing I'm going to mention to you is the minutes for February ninth, April sixth, and October fifteenth are just going to be pulled out for some more revision at this point. So you have minutes from January twelfth, April thirteenth, May eleventh, June eighth, June eighteenth, July thirteenth, October twenty-sixth, November nineteenth. With that in mind, are there any errors or admissions? Yes?
I called it on the minutes.
Which one specifically, sir?
Both of all of them. This goes back to January twelfth.
Yep.
And, you know, it's hard to get all these minutes, plus having to read three hundred seventy-five pages three days before a meeting. And I'd like in the future that minutes would be done in a reasonable time, that they'd be ready for each meeting, because if you go back to here, you can't even know what happened a year ago. I'd like the staff looking to show that we get a minute, you know, within a month, or a week before the next meeting, something like that.
Well, I think with Holly coming on board now, that will make a little bit of difference, because I know that everyone's been trying to pitch in, trying to fill her position at this point. So things do suffer a little bit at times.
Yeah.
So back to my original -- thank you. Thank you. Back to my original question. Any errors or admissions as submitted? If not, I take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin is also acknowledging the affirmative. That's a unanimous vote by this board. Okay, that's going to bring us into public hearings this evening. So there's a number of continuances that are out there. Seven-seven-one-six, which is the Valero Road subdivision. Seven-seven-seven-one, which is the White Elephant Hotel LLC. Sixteen-dash-fifteen, Brotherhood of Thieves. Sixty-one-dash-fifteen, Seamus Crowley and Elizabeth Chinaro. Seventy-nine-oh-five, Audrey Sturck. Twenty-one-dash-fifteen, which is Forty-Six Surfside Road LLC. And we just learned about tonight, Forty-fourth-dash-fifteen, which is the trustees of Auction House Realty Trust. With that in mind, first thing before us tonight is seven-eight-eight-seven, which is Nantucket Island Resorts LLC. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bodett for Nantucket Island Resorts LLC. If you remember, this application was held over from last month to allow Mr. Pesci to fully respond to all the plans and for us to respond to some of his comments. He had numerous ones last month. We've now done that. I'm here with Jamie Anderson, Marjorie O'Connell. Jamie sent in a letter responding to all of Mr. Pesci's comments, and probably have that in your packet, as well as Mr. Pesci's response to those. And I think all of those have been addressed. There are just a few that on his comments, I mentioned, they were only partially addressed. And I think since then, we've addressed them, or we will be able to address them on the final plans. There is one comment. He did have a new comment that I did want to address. Mr. Pesci mentioned that, obviously, with an amendment to the special permit that'll be forthcoming to remove these lots from the existing special permit, there will have to be a stormwater analysis done on the remaining property left in the hotel. And he mentioned and actually suggested that he'd like to see a condition in this decision which states that there will be further stormwater analysis at a later date. And I wanted to discuss that with you, because I frankly prefer that we not have a specific condition in this decision that says we have to satisfy something on another property, basically. I think it'll unduly encumber this property, and I think frankly, it has to happen anyway. We can't sell these lots that we're creating without removing the special permit from the lots, and we can't apply for a special permit amendment without satisfying the board and Mr. Pesci as to the stormwater that's going to exist on that stormwater solutions that are going to exist on that site. So I did talk to staff briefly about it this morning. Leslie suggested that perhaps something in the body of the decision that just states that we will be filing a special permit amendment might suffice, and we're happy with that as well. Certainly available to address any other comments the board has.
Okay. Board members? I don't see. I think we've pretty much vetted through the board. Andrew, Leslie, did you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, at the last hearing, the only outstanding issue was finalizing Ed Pesci's comments. Those have been completely finalized. He actually provided some clarification to some of his comments today, so that's all set. I would recommend that you close the public hearing and make a decision tonight.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this application, seeing no one?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second? Motion is -- all right, I'm going to stop right here for one second.
It's the three of us.
Yeah, because I think Mr. McGlaughlin hasn't been. He's missed, yeah, a few on this one.
And he hasn't read back in.
So it's just the three of us right now on this, okay? You've missed a few of these, John. So here we go. Okay, all right. So I just wanted to be clear on this. So, motion to close the public hearing was made in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve with that language that you have agreed to?
Just sign it in the office. And do I hear a second? That motion's now made in seconded. Discussion on the issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Great. Looking forward to this project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to recommend that you hear the next two applications together. They're completely interrelated.
I'm inclined to agree with you at this point. So, board members, if there's no problem with that, we're going to hear both, seven-nine-oh-four and fifty-six-dash-fifteen, but we will have to take separate votes on those, just so you know. So for Newtown Court subdivision for the applicant, Mr. Bodett, we're going to keep you busy, yes? Are you here? Oh, you're not here for this one. I'm so sorry. Mr. Fredericks, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Myself, Wood Gifford, and Leo Azadorian are here to answer any questions.
Okay.
We had brought this to you as a preliminary plan, and I'll talk about both of these, if you don't mind, together. As I said before, when we purchased this property, our intent was to subdivide the property into two lots, to put in a rural road, to minimize the impact on the neighborhood, and more importantly, fit in from an aesthetic standpoint. We thought that was more appropriate. I've been involved in housing, as many people have been out here for many years, and a big fan of the covenant program, and felt that this was a perfect opportunity to take a second step, which is what the special permit's trying to do, which is to turn both of the lots that would be developed into covenant lots. When you think about all the things that we talk about at town meeting and through the planning process, we're looking for places where there is water, there's adequate sewer, there's bus routes, we are near the congested parts of the middle part of the island. We believe this is a perfect location for this type of subdivision. We have put before you a road that is twenty feet wide. There's a two-foot green strip on both sides. It's meant to have an apron that converts over to shell, again, in keeping with what we hope to be the feel of the neighborhood. We have modeled a lot of what will become a homeowners association, and I know that's not before you tonight, but it is a key element to this that will look like a Noshop or National Quisage. There'll be a fair amount of restrictions. We understand that the lots are small and that the density on the property is, you know, in many cases, a little stronger than what most people are used to seeing, and we think we can control that through the homeowners association. The lots and our target for the lots tends to be island families for the covenant lots. My daughters will be taking one in the front and the one all the way in the back. Not that that's really relevant. We've reviewed Mr. Pesci's engineering reports. He's raised a handful of what we think are very minor issues, and Leo's here to address them, but we don't see any issue in anything that he raised. We're happy to comply with what he suggests. There was a question that had been asked, and I don't remember if it was from staff or if it came through one of the abutters having to do with the right to use this road in the future. We're absolutely amenable to that. We think that that's important. We think that the only thing we would ask is that they pay some reasonable and proportionate amount of the cost to put it in, and that they comply to the HOA, which we think's critical to the neighborhood. So with that, we're really here to answer your questions.
That's great. Thank you. Leo, did you want to address anything very quickly, or?
Well, we spent better part of today looking through Ed's report. We didn't have anything that stood out. A lot of the comments he made were housekeeping-type of things, duplication of dimensions, so somebody didn't have to flip through them. The plan was adequately dimensioned as far as the drainage structures go. We did have to increase slightly one of the structures to be more in tune with the runoff calculation. It was just an oversight on our part. But all in all, we were in agreement with what he wrote, an easy fix, and we'll be proceeding with the changes shortly.
Excellent. Thanks. All right. Board members, any questions on either of these? Anything for staff from the perspective?
Mr. Chairman, I think all of the Pesci comments can be addressed, and we recommend approval of both applications.
Okay. Great. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this, I'd ask you to -- Mr. Alger, good evening.
Good evening, Sarah Alger. I'm here for the Cody family. They're at Five Newtown, which is directly abutting this property to the northwest. Mrs. Cody is here, as are her son and daughter. Obviously, this change in the neighborhood is something that the family is having a little bit of a hard time adjusting to, because it is going to be an extreme change in density in a place where they've lived for a very, very long time. That said, they understand that the rules are the rules, so they're trying to be cooperative. There are a few things, however, that we would love to see them address. I think first and foremost, the idea of having the road available as an easement is critical. We don't want to end up in a situation, say, like we did with Shady Lane, for example, where you end up with Shady Lane and then Shadier Lane, where you could have just as easily just had one road. We really don't want to have that. And in terms of paying, I'd like to get a better handle on exactly what the fair amount of payment would be and how that would be determined and when that would be paid. I mean, at the moment, Mrs. Cody lives at the property. She didn't have any idea of doing anything with her property. Now, this has kind of come, it's a little bit of a surprise. She wants to be prepared for the future. She wants to have the flexibility of doing perhaps a similar thing to her own property in the future, just to try to maintain its value. That said, she's certainly not in a position to do an outlay of any significant funds at the moment to start paying for capital improvements that the Fredericks property would have to make regardless of what's happening. So I'd like to get a better handle on that, but I do think it's important. You know, just as an example, there's Ramos Court directly to the west of -- southwest? Well, anyway, right behind these properties, and that's a private road. If there were rights in that road that had been granted at the time that that subdivision was approved, then, you know, we wouldn't even have to be putting a road in. You could work with existing infrastructure. So I think, you know, I know the board's been a lot more forward-thinking of late, and this is an area where I think it would be important to do that. The second thing is on drainage. I just want to be sure. I didn't see Ed Pesci's report. I want to be sure that he has looked at it and he's clear that it's going to be going to work. There is a significant drainage problem in this area now. I did spend quite a bit of time with Leo Azadorian on the phone. He was extremely helpful in kind of explaining to me what their drainage plans for this property are. The town apparently has not been cleaning out the drains in Newtown Road, and I think that's part of the problem. But when it does rain, not only does it puddle in Newtown Road, but there's a significant backup on this property as well as the Cody property. So I'd like to see, make sure that that's addressed. Some screening as part of the landscape plan would be great, obviously. And I think finally, just because of the situation with the road going right up against the Cody's boundary line, it would be wonderful if you would impose some added protections on when construction could start. This is very, right up against Mrs. Cody's bedroom, and they were starting, I think, doing some hole digging not that long ago at seven o'clock in the morning, and, you know, that's a little rough. So I know that's nothing that you've done on residential, but, and I know this isn't in the core, however, it would be nice, maybe the applicant would agree to something if you didn't want to set a precedent, which I completely understand.
Yeah.
But just in the interest of being considerate to a single elderly woman who's living alone, it's a lot.
Sarah, do you want to report?
Yeah.
Mr. Fredericks?
I'll respond to Sarah's concerns. As far as the cost of the road, we're happy to share any level of detail that she needs to see to understand that cost. We're not looking for anyone to purchase the right or anything. We're looking at engineering cost, utility expansion, and the cost of installing the road. We're happy to share that. My view is it would be simply split by the number of lots. So we have three that would be fed off of it. If they end up with, in their best thinking, one in the back, then they would pay something like one quarter of the cost of that construction, and I'm happy to share those numbers. I can be relatively flexible, as long as it feels reasonably fair. We're not trying to make any money off the expansion of the cost of that. I think the issue of screening, we have a very light sketch plan that we have talked to some of the kids that we're trying to bring into the covenant homes. A huge part of this, and the reason I reference National Quisage, is screening and vegetation is one of the ways you soften density. So we're very comfortable with, you know, reasonable screening on all parts. If you've noticed, since we bought it, we just put in a substantial hedge. We have other things planned. We're happy to share that in any form that makes the Cody's comfortable. I'm more than happy to sit down with the Cody's and lay out a construction schedule that addresses the time of days and the starts. You know, again, I'd have to hear a little bit about what they need, but we have no intention of in any way being disruptive to the neighborhood. Typically, we are going to start at seven-thirty, eight o'clock, and finish at four-thirty-five o'clock. But more than happy to talk and listen to anything that they need that is specific. So I'm not sure if I've addressed everything, but we certainly want to be good neighbors. Our children are going to live there, both at the front end of a subdivision and the back end, and certainly want them to be in good standing with their neighbors.
I think that addresses everything. The only part of this that I'm at all uncomfortable about is, and it's because I'm hoping that this sets a precedent for future situations with roads like this, is that you get something in writing that's in the documentation that is clear how somebody buys in and gets the easement rights, so that we don't end up in a situation where, and I'm not saying that Mr. Fredericks would do this, but other people might, so if we're doing this as a model for the future, let's have it so that you know what you're getting into and it doesn't end up being a false choice.
And Sarah, one other point. You had mentioned timing. We're not in any rush. They can come forward, and those rights would be, I would think, permanent in the road, and you'd have those rights for whenever it's right for them to consider doing that.
Right. I think that's the important piece, because they're just not currently in a position where they want to be doing it.
Understand.
And I see staff kind of acknowledging they might have some possible draft language they can help craft with this to satisfy that concern.
Yeah.
So that we start a little template for the future with this.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Great.
Was there anyone else in the audience who wanted to comment on this?
Yes, Bob Ramos. I'm a butter Ramos Court. So I was just wondering, you know, I'm not here to oppose, I'm just here to try and to, I guess, if this is starting to set a precedent for this area, if there's four houses here, just say the Cody's, they decide they want a four. There's snows on the other side, they want a four. You know, there's 12 houses. Ramos Court, just for the record, is private road, and nobody can use Ramos Court as an inner and out. So that's, you know, that's the way it was when they did that road from the beginning. So that's right off the table is, you can't use Ramos Court.
Nope. If you have no rights in the road, you can't use it for that much.
And I just, you know, maybe want to see things slowed down a little bit. I just kind of got on board with this. It seems to change from, you know, I talked to Dave today, and, you know, from previous conversations with everybody in the neighborhood, everybody was concerned about the same thing. They don't want to end up to be sorry in Essex Road, and that's, you know, I'm just, there's a lot of houses, and I'm sorry, that's the way I feel. I mean, if we're going to start, you know, four, 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 there's 12 houses. Tom Stack pulls in the neighborhood, he's on Lewis Court, they could do four more houses over there. I mean, I could put a couple more houses on my lot. I mean, I'm just, you know, that's kind of like, I want to see things kind of slowed down a little bit and figure out what we can do.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this?
We like to put a lot of conditions on a lot of things, but the one thing we haven't really done to this extent is put conditions on a subdivision of this size, as to when they can work, when they can't work. We've done that with a lot of commercials, but we haven't gotten, we haven't gone down the rabbit hole here on residential of this size. And I hesitate to get involved at the planning board level doing this to residential subdivisions that don't entail 100, 200 structures. I can see a memorandum of agreement between you and Sarah and her client, but it wouldn't be part of, I'm a little uncomfortable making it part of a planning board decision, because I don't even know how to enforce that. We'd have to have Marcus parked over there on the street. But I'm a little uncomfortable, Andrew, I don't remember in my tenure here, doing this kind of stuff on a small residential subdivision. Have we done it? I appreciate everything is being said, having lived next to Sherburn Commons when it was built, and then violating every rule and regulation on the planet. But I'm a little leery about going down this road, literally and figuratively.
I get the sense, just listening to Mr. Fredericks and after having watched Sarah, that I think they're kind of in agreement with each other that this isn't necessarily a road for us, but I get the sense both parties are going to be amenable toward each other in trying to work out a solution here and try to...
I would just like to work it out with Mr. Fredericks directly. I don't think the board needs, as long as he admits his willingness to discuss it.
And I think you've heard him publicly commit to that at this point, so I think that's a pretty strong statement right there at the moment. So I'm not sure I see this board getting into that area at the moment. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this? All right, so, board members, when we deal with this, we're actually going to have two different things we're going to have to deal with. First is the subdivision, and the second thing will be the special permit. So we can close the public hearing on both things, if you're so inclined.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearings on both of them.
Okay. And do I hear a second to that?
Second.
No. An alternate can sit on one, but not the other.
That's correct. So on the subdivision, that's going to be the four of us.
Okay.
Okay? And then on the special permit part for the covenant housing, that's where an alternate's going to be engaged. So let me just start with the first thing, which is the subdivision. And what's the pleasure of the board on doing that?
What's the surface of this subdivision road, again?
Why don't you direct that to either Leo or...
What's the surface of the road, again?
It will be, there will be a 12-foot apron or a 20-foot apron.
Onto Newtown.
Onto Newtown, and then the road itself will be shelled.
All right, because I'm just, I'm reading the staff recommendation, and you don't have aprons at all on a dirt road or a shell road, and it says a shell apron, which doesn't exist under, on the planet. So I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at this.
You meant, Dave meant to shell.
No, there are individual driveways, they say shell aprons. There's no such thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Thought you were talking about Newtown.
There's edgers, but that's not an apron. So I don't necessarily follow the staff recommendation to that extent.
Okay. All right, so what do we all want to do here?
Where do you want to go first?
We're going to start with the subdivision, which is, which should be before us, because the subdivision will help to create the special permit ultimately at this point, so that's the first place I'd like us to go.
Andrew, are you comfortable with the engineer's report that we got?
Late.
Yeah, late.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that? That motion is made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. McGlaughlin? He's in the affirmative, so that's a unanimous vote by the board on that part of the application. Mr. Trudell, I'm going to activate you for the second part of this, which is the special permit. Thank you, sir. The public hearing is duly closed at this point. Pleasure of the board.
Just a quick question, staff?
Yes, please.
I'm just circling back on something Sarah said, because as you know, you have no rights for anything in these roads if you're in a butter unless you're specifically deeded a right. That's not something we generally put in here either, correct? Because I think that's what they're after.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need to put language like this in with a specific trigger. This has been the problem with...
Before.
Before. It's clearly in your rules and regulations that you're supposed to be coordinating these ways, but there has to be a mechanism to ensure that there isn't resistance after the fact.
So what would that mechanism look like, if that's part of my motion?
It would be in the homeowners association documents. There would need to be a trigger, you know, when and if the property owner requested. We probably would have some sort of a sketch about them maybe finishing off the cul-de-sac and talk about some sort of formula about how the cost would be apportioned.
We could do that in the homeowners association as it applies.
We could do that in the homeowners' association as it applies to lots that will have the covenant in place on them, and we can also incorporate it into whatever memorandum of understanding that we have for a future tie-in to the infrastructure that's going to be in the road.
I think that's what Sarah was sort of looking for.
I'm going to...
I think it should be part of the subdivision approval, not the, I think you need to revisit your subdivision approval, and I don't know that you should be doing it as part of the special permit for the covenant lots. I think it should be a subdivision in your statement of conditions of subdivision approval.
Board members...
I'll make a motion to reopen the subdivision vote.
Second.
All right, so to formalize the process.
We'll go backwards, yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so go ahead.
I'll make a motion to incorporate the appropriate language that you all work out relative to future access to that road, by any butter.
Second.
Is that where you're going?
Yes.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Second.
So that motion's now made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. All right.
And I'll make a motion on the second one to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second? That motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next thing before us is 57-15, Macheney Lane LLC, for Ryan Conway. Plan one to come away for the applicant. Aye.
Aye.
Anything you want to bring before us at this point? No?
No. Well, just want to mention it's a basement apartment, so it wouldn't be visible from the street, or it's not like a structure that you're going to see. That's why I think 680 square feet would be fine.
Question.
Go ahead.
Andrew, on the recommendation, isn't he applying for tertiary dwelling permit from us, or are we talking about a building permit separate from us?
I had a question on that myself.
It's the same thing.
Mr. Chairman, I think there was some confusion about, just internally, not with the applicant, about the form that was filled out.
Yeah.
So that was more of an administrative comment. He's clearly applying for a second, or for a tertiary dwelling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was there anything else?
No.
I just have one quick thing, Ryan, just kind of looking at the parking configuration at this point, and I was chatting with staff about it a little bit. I'm not sure if there's something we could do to maybe tidy that up a bit, and I kind of, with Andrew and Leslie, I think they might have a thought or two in the process, or did you want to try to work with him a little further?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the, I've learned that the parking was approved as part of the second dwelling, is that right?
Okay.
So that parking arrangement on this one has already been approved.
It has been, okay.
There's some others that we need to take a look at.
Can I withdraw what I just said? Thanks, thank you for clarifying that with me. Okay, so, board members, is there anything else on this application?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, and do I hear a second?
Second, thank you.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, this is a special permit too. Diane, you're going to sit on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Motion to approve.
And do I hear a second? Motion's made and seconded, discussion. Hearing, I'm sorry, did you?
I said second.
No, no, I thought I heard something else, I thought I heard someone say, "Mr. Chairman", I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next thing before us is 58-15, which is Christopher T. Oberg on 30 Macy Lane for the applicant. Mr. Wilson, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Michael Wilson, on behalf of Christopher Oberg, and he is the applicant. He's asking for a special permit to create a secondary lot under the Affordable Housing Needs Covenant Program, and he's also requesting a waiver of the second curb cut requirement there. You see on your plan, he's endorsed the location where he would like to have the lot come down to Macy's Lane, and that would be the proposal for the access to the rear of the lot where the second structure is to be located. The primary structure already benefits from existing parking, which has, to the west of it, between the parking area, where the headlights of the cars would be, and the house, very mature vegetation, very tall, almost completely obscures the structure from the road, so they don't want to interfere with that if we can avoid it and give the secondary lot their own access. Parking would be provided as is shown on the plan. What he's hoping, and what we don't have right now, is the proposed footprint. He's looking for a house that might be up for being moved onto the lot, so we would obviously have to come back through with the HDC before we do anything on the actual structure itself. Sits in the R5 zone, with respect to the lot sizes, they all fall within compliance of what the code requires.
Mike, this parking doesn't work at all. You can't get out of space two unless you airlift the car out of there.
Well, space three is sort of optimistic if you need it. I think the secondary dwelling would only require two spaces.
Yeah, no, you can't, you can't get out of lot, number two.
Okay.
You can't get out of anything except for space three, period. So I don't know if you can get an easement from lot B to straighten this out, so at least you have realistic parking, like if you go in and square and then back in and go out again, but this parking isn't going to work at all, not for anybody.
Perhaps they could be angled to be consistent with that northwesterly run.
I see that, but I don't think that's going to work either. I think you need to square off that corner in order to get two cars at an angle even that can back all the way down the driveway. This is, this is a problem. I don't mind creating secondary lots, provided they make sense, but in this case, one has, I don't know, 4,800, the other one is 3,300? I don't know how that's working. But I'm having an issue with the parking, not the fact that he wants a secondary lot, that's fine, but this parking is not working.
Could I move to amend and withdraw the parking as it exists, just asking the board to vote on the secondary lot application, and then when we're in front of the Historic District Commission, we know what type of structure is in there, we would still have to comply with the parking, and that would have to be worked out between the surveyor, engineer, and the applicant.
I don't think you'd get into too much trouble with the HDC, especially if the structure moved that way, you'd give yourself more parking. If the structure moved towards the south, you could get parking right up next to the building. I think where you're going to run into trouble is at the building department, because you don't have the requisite legal parking space that you can actually get in and out of. I think that's where you're going to run into trouble, is on a zoning issue there.
If the structure were located in that southerly portion of the secondary lot...
You got wrong.
There would be plenty of parking, I would think, in theory, pointing forward toward the structure.
Yeah.
Again, we need to see what's available on the used building market and what the footprint that would drive where we could fit it, but there's certainly, it's not going to benefit anybody to have dysfunctional parking.
Well, as I say, I don't mind creating a secondary lot.
Thank you.
It's just that you're just, you're going to have problems with your parking if it stays the way it is.
I, you know, just as one member of the board, though, I'm a little leery about deferring to another board for the parking, because that generally is under our purview at this point, so I'd really like to consider it as an entire pack, and I don't want to set this kind of precedent where if it doesn't quite work, we're going to defer to another board to deal with that situation.
No, no, don't defer. You're going to get nailed by Marcus.
Yeah, it's okay, but that's, I'm afraid that's kind of where that was heading in my mind.
No, the HDC doesn't care about that.
Mr. Chairman, two parking spaces are required, and you can do a simple tandem, so you don't really need to have them back there like that.
Could I work it out with staff after we know where we're going with the structure, as far as what the parking configuration will be, provided that we're certainly obligated to bring two spaces to the lot?
I think that's a lot more reasonable.
Thank you.
For you, Mr. Chairman, does the existing parking, does that have an apron now where it says gravel drive?
I can't recall. I can't recall, but if there needs to be an apron, we can certainly have one installed. There would be an apron proposed for the second one to the affordable lot, so while they're there doing that, if that's not present in the field, we would certainly go ahead and accept that as a condition.
The other point that Ms. Nell just mentioned is that the parking area needs to be 20 feet deep unless you're doing a 20 and a 17-foot, so it may be out, it may need to be lengthened a little bit.
On the existing parking?
Yeah.
I think that what we have is that there's a portion of the Macy Lane road layout that doesn't necessarily reflect what's in the field. I think where you see the line from Macy Lane and you see the dotted line for the parking, it may be that they have it, it's just within the area of the layout, but if staff wants another answer on that, we can certainly bring that in.
I guess on our list to just go over is to make sure that all the parking fits entirely within the lot, so none of the parking should be hanging out into the layout.
Agreed.
All right.
That's perfectly acceptable. All right. Anything else from the board? From staff? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this. Okay, Mr. Borchett, you're going to sit on it on this one.
I make a motion to close the...
Public hearing.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary lot. Since we don't have a house before us, Andrew, we don't have parking before us. We don't have any requirement for parking on the new lot, because there's nothing there. So I don't want to get tied into a parking plan when we don't even know what's there. It's a vacant lot at the moment. Where do we go with that?
I think what, we would ask the applicant to submit a revised plan, which would show the parking spaces fitting onto the property. There's a building envelope that's pretty much sketched out here, which meets the minimum, at least the 32 by 24 meets the requirement of the bylaw, so...
You may move, though.
Well, we could have the surveyor at least outline what the setbacks are in the final plan, and the building would have to fit in that, and then we could leave it to the HDC to decide on the house, as long as it fits in that envelope.
And they have parking.
And then I think we just need to get some clarification. We have to make sure these setbacks work and that the existing parking is sort of straightened out.
That's my motion with staff.
And I guess for clarity, they are asking for the waiver on the setbacks. Is that what you're doing between the lot lines?
Between the lot lines.
So you can see that, as shown, there's a setback that's 3.6 feet at the back corner.
Yep.
And then 3.8 feet, so this is the internal lot line, not the external.
Right, right.
Yeah, right.
So then there's a four foot, roughly four foot at the other corner.
Yep.
To those, all those conditions...
That's me, my motion.
I'll second her motion with those conditions and that language, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So that motion is made and seconded, is there discussion on the issue? All right, if you're all clear on this application, then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Steph.
Appreciate it. Next thing before us is 59-15, which is Karen Flanagan, Cliff Delaney Trust, on 64 Cliff Road, sorry, for the applicant. Hi.
I'm Sophie Metz for the applicant.
You can actually...
Pull it down.
There you go.
I'm Sophie Metz for Karen Flanagan.
Okay.
So I hope, I didn't submit the application, but I hope it's clear, the house borders Cliff and Delaney, and the back portion of the house on Delaney has a garage connected to the house, and so these guys were just hoping that you guys would allow a second curb cut in, to that garage.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Andrew, being as it this is my family's property, there were two driveways already on the property. They were grandfathered, they've been there all along. They're coming in where the stone fences, you know, the stone posts used to be on the front side, and they seem to be coming in where the old driveway was on the backside. They don't need to be here. They've shifted about 10 feet, that's it, but they're still on, you know, even though there's like, the backyard has been subdivided, where the house was, was subdivided, the lot, the two driveways seem to be exactly where the driveways have always been since So I don't know why you're here.
We were, that was the assumption that my clients had made when they purchased this lot with the plans that were associated, but we were told we had to come.
Why?
Andrew.
Oh.
Well, last second, is it?
No, they've had both driveways.
According to Leslie, there was some, the demolition and other things that had happened that had, that it's, I know what you're saying, Linda, but I don't know that it is in the exact same position.
It's about five feet further towards the cliff, that's it. But you've always had two curb cuts on this particular part of the lot.
No, I understand, but it's, but the lot has been subdivided, it is a new lot. You know, I think they're here now, I think the board should entertain it.
Just for the sake of argument?
Well, I think that whenever there's a significant change to a property, we get to revisit it. I don't...
Well, then, for the board's edification, the two parking accesses to this lot have always been there since 1926.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's perfectly good, a good argument to support the, I think staff recommends approval of it. The one thing I do want to leave on record, though, is that the depth on the, in front of the garage, there should not be parking that, again, is hanging into the public right-of-way. There's no sidewalk there now, but that area is building up quite substantially. There may need to be a sidewalk there, so the cars, even though it'll be an enforcement issue, I think it's, that the board should have it in its permit, so there's no question in the future. So it could be used as an access, but parking of cars of a certain size that will hang into that shouldn't be happening.
Understood.
Because where you have the apron is in the roadway layout.
Got it.
So they'll have to put their mini car in that little mini garage.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else from the board or from staff? No. All right, this is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this. No, I guess not at this point. Diane, you're going to be sitting on this one, dear. Okay?
Second.
So the motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve.
Has a unanimous vote. Motion is made and seconded for approval.
Can I just ask one?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
On that second driveway entrance on Delaney Road, how wide is that?
I don't know what the landscape architect did, he typically does 12 feet, but it could be any size that you guys want it to be.
But it looked a lot bigger than 12 feet, and I just was wondering, did it make sure it wasn't over 20 feet?
That mass that it's going into is 17 feet wide, so I know it has to be, at most, it would be, he's drawing it at 14.
14 feet.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So the motion has been made and seconded for approval. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next thing is 60-15, which is Kenneth C. Coffin Incorporated for Tomahawk Road for the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
It's in the south.
Yep.
It's in the south.
No, just any questions, that's all we're doing.
Okay, so-
We're just putting up a very simple building, that's all we want to do.
No, it seems straightforward. So, board members, is there any questions that you have for, anything from staff? This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this?
Motion to close a public hearing.
John, you're gonna be up on this one. Thank you, sir. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Second.
That's, motion is made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, much appreciated, gentlemen. So I'm gonna take, we want to hear these next two simultaneously, like we did beforehand, and we'll just- Uh, let me kinda, I might kinda disagree a little bit. Leslie?
Actually, Chairman, on this one, I think you should take them up separately.
You wanna do them separately? Okay, all right. Sorry, I didn't realize. So first thing before us is 7903, Manchester Circle subdivision modification. This is off of Somerset Road.
Well, I think actually, Arthur Reed for the, for the applicant, I don't see how I can discuss one without the other, so.
Let's, let's see, let's see where it goes. I'm getting a sense from the board and staff, they wanna-
The, the application here, in, in the special permit application, is to approve the creation of a secondary lot, covenant lot, and also to have separate driveway for it and for the other house, as, as they exist on the property. And the, and the point that causes us to need a modification of the subdivision is the fact that the original language in the original decision that created the subdivision prohibited additional dwellings. The, or rather, additional lots being created on that roadway. Once again, this is a covenant lot, so it's not really going to have any impact more than a primary and secondary dwelling would. And secondly, there's a precedent for this in that another owner fronting on the road, actually not, not one of the original Manchester lots in the subdivision, but another lot from another property that abutted it, owned by Cliff Williams, was granted a modification with regard to his application about 10 years ago. And what we think would be the appropriate way to handle it would be for the board to modify the original decision to provide that the limitation against creation of further lots fronting on that road would be able to be waived by the board in any particular instance. And obviously, we would suggest that it be waived in this instance.
Okay. Board members, any question?
No.
No? Anything from staff? Go ahead, Andrew, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of questions. So there's a portable storage tent in the back that crosses the lot line. What's the status of that?
I don't know. I'm assuming that if it crosses the lot line, that it's going to be removed.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the amount of parking, so for the new building, there's, there's two spaces created in the front, and then the parking goes around to the back, and then there's two additional spaces in the back. It just seems like, the parking, it seems like a lot of parking in that one area where it seems like, why couldn't there be an opportunity to make that work a little bit better together? It just seems like there will be a lot of, it's just not very well coordinated with what's happening at the end of the road. It puts a bunch of cars in the, you know, in the front yard between the building, where there's, looks like a wide parking area next door as well.
I didn't draw the plan.
Okay. So I would ask that the board hold this until we get at least a chance to have a, have a talk about that.
Andrew, what are you talking about?
On the plan, which is on page 166 of your packet.
Yeah.
There is proposed, where it says proposed parking drive, which enters, so there's a new parking area coming off a leg of the-
Manchester.
In Manchester Circle. So to the left, there's two spaces and I believe a turnaround. Then to the right, there's a drive that kind of encircles the entire house to the back, and then two additional spaces way in the back, next to where the portable tent is. So, you know, in effect, the whole lot becomes parking around that house. Now, if you look next door at the existing house, there's a pretty large parking area there as well. The two, the two entrances are kind of right next to each other. You know, it just seems like a lot of area dedicated to parking and vehicles seems a little excessive. Like, it could be reduced and maybe some of the landscaped areas a little bit more organized there. If they were, the properties were either working together or something. I just, it, we don't usually see that much parking around a house. I don't.
Lots, lots, with American families, lots of cars, folks in cars.
So, anyway, that's my suggestion.
Okay. All right. Anyone else on the board have any comments or?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I think that the condition could certainly be addressed, but I think before the special permit is issued for this, this, this site plan needs some work.
Okay.
Do you want to approve either one of them?
Either way, if you're gonna consider any covenant lots on this, you would need to address the subdivision issue. So 7903 has to be addressed, you know, for any lot in here. And it, you know, I think that's up to you and whether, I think it's an appropriate place for that to be allowed. In terms of issuing the special permit, so it's number 6215, I think you should, we should wait.
So we can approve the subdivision part?
Yes.
And wait on the special permit part?
Yes.
Yep, I think that's what staff would like to do.
Okay, that would be my motion.
Well, we're really not quite there yet, because you actually haven't heard the second one yet, and the second thing before us is that we've still got a public hearing that we need to open at this point. So is there anything else from the board or from staff? Ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone who'd like to comment on this? All right, not hearing anyone wanted to comment on 7903. Would it be appropriate to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the 7903 subdivision.
Okay.
Application.
Motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Mr. Borchett, you're sitting on the next one, which is 6215. I think we've heard both from staff and, and the board at this point. Let me just go right to a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this, hearing none.
I'll make a motion to continue to January 11th. Is that where we're going?
Yes. Second.
All right. So we're gonna continue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, we also have on the agenda later on, the ANR plan, and since you're putting over the special permit, the ANR plan, I guess, this will go beyond the 21 days, I guess we should withdraw and resubmit.
Yeah, and I think we can accept that without prejudice at this point.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Well, you want to wait till you get-
Get it out of here.
You guys, are you fine just skipping into this right now, everyone? All right. So-
I'll make a motion to allow the withdrawal of ANR 7907 Manchester without prejudice.
Okay, and Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, we recommend that you waive this little fee.
Waive the filing fee, yeah, and waive the filing fee.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Yep.
So that motion is made and seconded. If you're all clear on the motion at this point, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That brings us to 63-15, Six Marble Way LLC, the Wesley portion of Six Marble Way, for the applicant.
For the applicant, Stephen Cohen, sir.
Mr. Cohen, good evening.
Yeah, I'm Brian Sullivan, I am the applicant.
Okay, great. Hi.
Just for the record, the assessor, I believe, has now renamed this lot as Eight Marble Way. So what's being proposed here, I first want to point out a couple of things. The staff report has this noted as an MCD. It's not, actually not an MCD. The, the square footage of the building is less than 4,000 square feet, so it doesn't require an MCD. And I also do want to point out that the lot at over 15,000 square feet is, is more than 50% larger than required under the zone, so it's an oversized lot for the zone. What Mr. Sullivan is proposing is essentially a car storage facility, not a garage that would be used on a regular basis, but just essentially dead storage and warehousing. The facility would not be staffed on a regular basis. You would have to make an appointment or arrangement in advance, either through a caretaker or through Mr. Sullivan or someone who he hires, to come in and get the cars in and out. The floor plan would fit about 20 cars and with potentially up to 28 or 30 cars, if they put in some of those racks. He hasn't totally worked that out, but the, no consumers would be driving their cars in and out of the building. It would all be done essentially like a concierge service, either by them or by, either by Mr. Sullivan or his employee or some, some professional. There is no proposed exterior uses. There's no car washing or whatever outside the building. There's no proposed exterior commercial uses. There are two residential apartments. One is a two-bedroom dwelling and one is a three-bedroom dwelling, and those might have ancillary residential uses. Mr. Sullivan might keep his, you know, individual personal boat there, but there wouldn't be any proposed boat storage outside or car storage outside or anything like that. It would essentially be a lot that looked like it had a barn on it, and you wouldn't really be able to tell what's going on inside from the exterior. We anticipate there being very, 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 very few vehicle trips, because the whole point of the thing is essentially long-term storage, you know, over the winter, between the summer and stroll, those kind of things. It's not coming, you know, it's not your garage where you're moving your car in and out all the time. It's just, the facility's not set up for that kind of in and out. The- Parking that's proposed is five parking spaces with two in the front and one in the back, including one handicap. I was a little confused, and maybe the staff can provide some clarification as to whether or not we need the parking waiver. If, if the two apartments are considered a primary and secondary dwelling, then I don't think we actually need the parking waiver, but that if they're considered apartments, then it wouldn't need the parking waiver that we've requested. And again, my client actually has space to do more parking if the board wanted it, but because the facility itself is housing cars and there's no consumers coming there, we didn't really see the purpose of having, you know, we'd rather have more green space and less, less driveway and less parking, although the entire facility is proposed to be screened with evergreens. The relief that's being relied, applied for is only two things. One is use of exterior, of interior-exterior warehousing and storage under, the bylaw requires a special permit no matter what, and then the optional parking waiver if needed. It's not an MCD. I do want to address a couple of the points that were raised in the, in the staff report. I think that I've already covered essentially the business plan. If there are additional questions, Mr. Sullivan and myself are happy to address them. The traffic, again, is anticipated to be extremely low, and the driveway width could be adjusted for basically whatever width the board wanted. It could be residential or commercial width. A lighting and screening plan, the screening is shown on the proposed plan, but we'd be happy to do a lighting and screening plan through staff if the board wanted. You know, obviously, we'd have to be compliant with the dark sky law to begin with, or bylaw to begin with. And then there was a question about whether or not the units would be inclusionary housing. Since inclusionary housing is for MCDs, they would not be inclusionary housing, although they would essentially be what we would now call workforce housing, which is not a technical term, but, but a colloquialism that's now circulating. The intent is that they would be either year-round or peak seasonal, not, this is not, you know, a weekly rental type of situation. So we anticipate very little turnover and a high quality of residential use, not, not some kind of, you know, frat house atmosphere. So I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Steve, I believe the spaces that are being asked to be waived is the 1 per 900 for storage and warehousing. Since you have parking already for the storage and warehousing in the building.
Yeah.
You are required to have five, five spaces for the bedrooms, the duplex upstairs, one per bedroom. You are not required to have a handicap space for a residential unit upstairs.
Right.
So the way the application came in was that the, whatever, how many spaces, four or five spaces for the commercial storage and warehousing is what is being asked to be waived.
Yeah.
All of the spaces required for the apartment, the two apartments, are being provided on-site.
So it, it, it kinda doesn't matter whether you view it as requiring the 10 spaces or five spaces. We can comply either way, because the facility itself is providing, you know, the whole thing is parking spaces. And there's no anticipated commercial consumer use, and there's no anticipated onsite employees, except people who are bringing cars in and out of the facility. It's not gonna be staffed from eight to six, you know, it's sort of just when a car is needed, it would go in or out. So I think this is the very definition of where the, the requirements are a fairly significant redundancy. But whatever the board feels is appropriate, we're happy to take the five spaces that are offered, with, with obviously, the commission knows that if you, if there's a problem, you can reopen the public hearing and require more parking, which is what I would suggest you do, since we don't necessarily want to pave the whole thing. If we could save some of the green space, that'd be better.
But the five spaces that are being provided are for the residential uses, that's the point. And you do not need a handicap space showing on the plan for that use, because that kind of restricts one of the uses right out of the apartment. You need five clear parking spaces, period. Not handicap.
We could, we could, we could remove that and just have it be an extra one.
It needs to be, it needs to be five spaces for the apartments, period.
Yeah. I know, we, we, we're not legally required to have a handicap space until you hit 20, so.
It doesn't matter. You're not legally required to have a handicap space for an apartment, period.
Right.
But if you have a handicap space here and you have five spaces upstairs, nobody's disabled to park in that space, you have cut out one of the spaces for the apartment. So the handicap space has to go off the plan. These five spaces are solely for the apartments. They need to be marked that way.
If the commission would like that signage and restriction, we're happy to take that commitment.
Anyone else on the board? Andrew, Leslie, do you have anything? Please.
The, the area that you've marked as sewer field, is that, what's, is that surface gonna be grass or what's, with that?
Right. It's just a septic field with grass over it.
Yeah, I'd intend that to be a grass area and then the driveway to be gravel with some concrete pad to get in and out of the garage space.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, through you also, I think you know that this is an area that's being considered for sewer extension, so there would be some sort of requirement in, that we have put on other applicants in the area to connect to sewer within a certain time, so you're aware of that?
I would look forward to a sewer connection as soon as possible.
Okay.
Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this?
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is the build, what's the status of the building? Has it, does it have HDC approval?
It does. It does. Oh, no, I take it back. I'm sorry.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay, thank you. All right. It would not get bigger.
Okay.
Oh, you got that.
Go ahead. So I'm gonna ask you to please come up to the microphone, identify yourself on the record, and if you're in the butter, just give us your address as well, too, please. Hi.
Hi. Mary Richrod, Two Marble Way.
You can pull that down a bit, dear, if you need to. There you go.
I just, we've gone through this about a month. I just feel that this is so inappropriate for this particular neighborhood. It's a totally, it has always been totally residential, and this has just happened in the last year. It is going to increase the traffic. The road is already in very bad shape. It's going to increase the traffic tremendously. And- It's going to increase the traffic tremendously, and it's going to totally alter the character of the neighborhood. So, I really object to them approving any alterations that are going to expand the amount of traffic we have and alter the neighborhood totally. And that's my only counter.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this?
Hi. Leah Kerrol, Seven Marble Way.
Matthew Hill, Seven Marble Way.
We agree with our neighbor. We just moved into the neighborhood. We're kind of just learning about this whole process, but again, like what she said, we think that it's definitely going to increase the traffic on the road, which is already in bad shape and pretty narrow. I know that they said it's low impact, but 20, we heard 60 cars, but they just said 20 to 30, so that's obviously going to increase the traffic and the noise in this residential neighborhood.
And we're just, it's also concerned that he's expressed what his intentions are, but if this property gets sold and people want to change it, it could just start to spiral on the commercial aspect of the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's, it's a really quiet neighborhood as of right now, so this large building, it doesn't really go with the whole neighborhood feel.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this?
Hi, I'm Erin Myers. I live on Sleepy Hollow, which is only accessed via Marble Way. And some of my concerns are when they're saying there will be no staffing, so does that mean that somebody can come and get a car at any, there's any hour of the day? I think we're going to have to talk about restrictions as to what's appropriate, as to when someone can come and go and get a car. Other concerns are, just in general, I was wondering if the board could answer some questions about CTEC, and is there any other businesses like this in similar residential neighborhoods? Because from what we gathered as a neighborhood and drove around and looked at other CTEC zoning, it's pretty small, and we didn't notice any large warehousing or multi-bay garages. Or just, we're just wondering if this is an appropriate type of business considering it is primarily residential.
All right.
With just two, the small CTEC.
Okay. So, those are your two questions?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to turn to Mr. Cohen to ask, answer the first one.
So, just as a clarification, it's not that there won't be staff, it's that it's not going to be a regularly-staffed facility where people could come and go from eight to 6:30, which is the proposed hours. It's that you would only have access from eight to 6:30, and that someone would only be coming to bring a car or to take it out, which we would anticipate would be very infrequently. But, but consumers would not be getting their own cars.
Right, but so, somebody couldn't request a car at 5:00 in the morning?
No. Brian likes to sleep in.
Yeah, I wouldn't be doing it.
No, we just want to make sure.
All right, just make sure.
That stuff like that could be.
Right. We, that's right. We expect the commission to impose reasonable hours of operation. And what was, what was the other question? Sorry?
No, that was more for the board as whether or not they could answer the question as to, in other CTEC zones on island, in residential neighborhoods, what types of, is this an appropriate type of, considering it needs a special permit, is this an appropriate type of business in a residential neighborhood?
So, let me turn to staff on that at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think a good example of this would be on Young's Way. One side of the street is completely residential and the opposite side is RC2 still, but the type of development that's happened on the commercial side is consistent with what's being proposed here, and those two uses, the commercial on one side and the residential on another, have worked. We do have one other area where there's CTEC on one side in Gremlin, and that was recently done in the Richmond properties, and the redevelopment over there is just starting, so that's maybe not the best example.
We didn't notice much residential in that area, so we're just trying to figure out where else do you have restricted by, so Young's Way.
All right, let me, let me, let Andrew and Leslie finish up, and then I'll turn to the board. So, go ahead.
On, on the Richmond side, I mean, the residential piece is coming. There is some new redevelopment on the commercial side, but again, I think Young's Way is really a good example of how the two can work together.
Thank you. Go ahead.
CTEC, CI, CN, all these, all these things are new. All of these areas, in a much larger area, were residential-commercial since the inception of zoning. Residential-commercial meant that you had residential and commercial in the same place, in the same neighborhood. If you've been out to Macy's, Lane, Pine, whatever it is.
Pine Tree.
Pine Tree, and what's the, what's the third one? Mary Ann. You see a lot of commercial businesses right next to a residential business, and there are places, the RC zone all over the island, which is now being decreased by Andrew and the board, one section at a time, without unintended consequences, are being converted so we can put the residential over, the here, if they're that separate, and put the commercial on this side of the street, like Andrew was saying, out at Richmond. So, there, it's pockets all over the place where there are residential and commercial right smack next to each other, because that's what the residential-commercial zone meant. But Andrew has refined it to the point of where, okay, a little more industrial's over here, so no residence, and a little bit more different kinds of commercial over here that can work with residences. So, it's, it's been long overdue. Zoning started in 1972, and it was just a patchwork quilt. So, we're trying to actually make the zoning look like what's underneath it. But that section over there where you are has always been RC2, always.
Yeah, we understand that commercial exists there. It's going to exist, and that's not what we're opposing. What we're opposing is.
The type.
The scale and the, and things that aren't necessarily planning board, but like add a character of the neighborhood where it's a little dirt road, and then there's no parking on Marble Way, and as owners on Sleepy Hollow, another private road, we certainly don't need or want any parking overflow. Understand this business, but like someone said before, this is one business. Another business would have to come before you and get more permitting, but it's just as a neighborhood, what can, how can we keep things restricted and still be commercial?
Any changes to, it runs with the land, not with the owner. Zoning does.
Right, but once there's a giant warehouse, uh, who's...
Any changes would have to come back here, go back out to notice. If there's a problem with the activities that are taking place on this lot, the planning board has the right to enforce it. It's not a free-for-all after it goes in. The planning board also has the right to reopen.
Okay.
The public hearing if problems arise and put more conditions on or do whatever we need to do to make it compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So, even though, let's say, they get the special permit for this basically dead storage for nine months of the year, cars go in once, they come out once, you know, the people come back and forth at the same time everywhere, May, June, they leave in September, October, and don't come back again, we could always reopen it and try to address it again, change the hours, do whatever we need to do. So, it's never a closed, done deal, and the planning board never loses absolute control over enforcement and over the activities that are taking place there or any activity that would come after it to change the nature of the activity. So, always be, rest assured that we are always here.
My other question would be more about the number of cars. It has 20 in the picture. Then we've been hearing 20, 30, we've heard more numbers. I've seen an email from Mr. Sullivan saying it needs to be over 30 to make it work. My question is, where do the extra cars go?
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Sullivan.
So, the, the plan shows 20 cars on it. My hope was to do some lifts on the backside so you could put one car under and one on top of it, and then, it's, it's not necessarily that it has to happen for me to work, but it would be best-case scenario for me if I had more than 20, but under 30.
Just one, one further comment.
All right.
At the other end of Marble Way, Somerset, my son's father has a couple of big buildings, and they were packed with cars because there's such a need for it here. And before any of you guys moved in out there, before it really started to get developed, Island Motors used to have a mammoth garage off of Bartlett just before you got to your place, and all the storage cars would go there, out at Holgate's at the airport. So, it's sort of a news that's been out there for a long time, because Mark's been down at the other end of the road for, I don't know, 30 years or something, or 25 years, and he's got those two big barns, and they were full of rent cars going in once and coming out once. So, and it caused very little trouble down at that end of the street with all the residences that were down there, because there was just no noise. It was just dead storage. So, it was something that people thought was a better idea than a full-fledged boat mechanics or whatever else that could have gone on there. So, it's, it's worked in other areas, that particular use.
Does that help?
A little bit.
Okay. Do you have any more questions? Or you want more answers to the same question?
No. No, it just, it just seems in general, as a neighborhood, we were, we're really hoping for just the whole, what CTEC is, lighter commercial use, like, it just seems so vague and up in the air and open to interpretation that what you might assume is light commercial use for somebody living there.
Well...
So, it's just...
Have you looked at the use chat of RC2? No, no, of RC2?
Which is not RC2 anymore.
No, no, no.
I don't really find that applicable.
But what I'm saying is what used to be able to be done there by, you know, under that, under that zoning district, the reason that Andrew and Leslie, you know, devised these lesser intense commercial zones is because they tried to come up with what was already there, like Neil Patterson Shop, which is extremely loud, extremely loud, okay? You have Wraiths, you have the boat buildings, which this abuts, you have Andrew Wings, you have the, yeah, and so.
Codilacs.
Codilacs, and you got whatever is going on with Don Decker in the last 40 years. There's always something going on there, but it was never like a gigantic, heavy commercial area. You have Monty McGowan's, right? And Marx. This zoning district got up, got rid of a lot of what could have happened. So, we sort of, six years ago, when did we do this, Andrew? Six? Six or seven years ago. So, we pulled back all of the stuff that could have happened that would have, believe me, you wouldn't be happy as a resident, okay? But restaurants, nightclubs, I mean, the stuff is unbelievable. Way past dinnertime could be noise, okay? So, the uses that are there are sort of, they are light commercial, so we have to sort of think about what those things are versus what could have happened with the previous zoning, okay? Cars don't make any noise when they're parked. They're parked, you know, they're parked for the winter inside. I mean, cars, people, there's a huge need for this issue, for this business. I mean, it's, it's not a loud business. I mean, I don't know what to say. I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to say that it doesn't have an impact.
Okay.
Go on.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
My name is John Myers from 14 Sleepy Hollow. And I think that the concern that the neighborhood has is the traffic that's going to be going up and down the road, and, you know, not necessarily the, and, and yes, we are concerned about the traffic, but more importantly, there shouldn't be any cars being able to be parked on Marble Way.
Well, it's a 60-foot layout, just so you know, Marble Way. So, as a...
Well, it's not 60 feet.
No, 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 no. The layout, the, the layout of Marble Way, for you, you guys should all know this, is 60 feet.
I know it is.
Which is a lot for most roads, okay? I don't know. Ralph Marble, ask him, okay? You're not going to be able to get him on the phone, but it's 60 feet.
Well, so...
Okay? So, as a planning board, I mean, we don't, there's nothing going to be required here to make the road worse or wider or whatever. That's not what I'm saying. But there's utility issues that could happen 20 years from now. There are things that could happen that you don't own, you know, you, there's, the width of that road is there on paper for something else to happen, okay? So, there's all these things you have to be taken into consideration. But to get back to your traffic issue, this business really isn't going to make any traffic in comparison to a business that's changing. If this was a mechanic shop, there'd be a lot more problem with something like this. This is just a parking garage in the wintertime, essentially. And the conditions that we put on a project like this, we can put conditions that an owner of a car can't just come out there, turn the key and open a door and go get his car, okay? This is, this is like, sort of like cold storage for your antiques or your junk or whatever. It's on trans or at one of those, these other places. It's, it has to be by appointment only, or somebody from his company has to come there and get, and escort the person to get the car. I mean, it's not a, you know, a place where people are just like willy-nilly getting their car.
And all 20 cars don't go at one time. You could have one car beginning of May, you could have four cars before Memorial Day, so it's really not going to be, okay, open the door, all 20 cars are charging down the street at one time. But we can put conditions on like they can't park in the street, that they, they can't do anything after 8:00 at night. That's the kind of stuff that you need.
We don't want this random owner. And we understand Brian doesn't want people in his garage, too, so that's what we're looking for, some conditions.
Yeah. And that, that stuff that we can put on, we can enforce it, doesn't work, we can put something else on.
I, I think that the kind of nuisances that the abutters are worried about are entirely acceptable conditions to my client. Noise, light, traffic, odor, all those things are entirely within your purview and acceptable to my client.
Will...
HGC in the building yet, so.
I wonder if all of the cars in the business model will be able to fit into the garage at once, and if not, where do they go?
Safety cars out.
They'll be on the building.
No outside storage.
That's up to the applicant.
Right, I think...
There's no outside car.
Parkin', that's his problem.
Yep.
Like an airplane hangar, if you can't fit any more planes in, they don't go in the hangar.
And if, if there's a two-bedroom apartment or a three-bedroom apartment, we're talking five spaces, does whoever's driving the cars around need a parking space as well? Does that make sense?
I mean, it may be somebody taking somebody out there in a car and leaving. They're not staying there. They're coming in to get the car and they're going away.
All right. Let's let Mr. Cohen answer that question, because that's the business model I think we've been asking for at this point. So, I think you've envisioned to a certain extent, there are certain hours of operation. I, I would really like you to be clear with this, with the neighbors.
Yeah, absolutely. So, my thought process and intention is I'll coordinate with a caretaker and say, okay, meet me there at 2:00, meet him there at 2:00, put the car in the garage, and then leave. And then, next day, another caretaker, next week. Or a client says, my caretaker's busy, will you go pick up my house at 50 Pulpus Road and put it in the garage for the winter? Go, 50 Pulpus Road, pick it up, have somebody drive me back to pick up my own car. That's kind of how I envisioned the process working.
So, the extra car will be at the house that you're returning the car?
Yeah, I'll need, I'll need another, I'll need another body.
You know what I'm saying? Like, if you're going to drive a car out of the garage, you have to get there in order to drive the car out of the garage.
I'll, I'll need a helper to like follow me on one end or the other, either at the garage to take me back to my car or at the property. There's going to have to be somebody to help me, yes.
Okay.
But, but that, that use doesn't necessarily need to be done parking spaces, it's a, it's a...
So, the plan is not to park?
All right. Hold on, hold on. I will just respectfully say everything goes through the chair. I don't want to be having two conversations, so...
Jay, I think the question was about any intention to park in the road, and I have no intention to park in the road at all. And I hope that, that there's no condition to do any widening on the road or anything like that, because I think the neighbors like the smaller size, and if it widens, then I only see the traffic increasing. Because I'm only one in, one out kind of a situation and not two passing, I wouldn't want to see it widened either.
Yep.
I mean, this, this type of use is likely to have 100 to 150 vehicle trips a year. You know, I mean, I can't imagine what would have less vehicle trips for the commercial use. It just happens to be that the things that are being stored there are 10 by 20. They're kind of big, but they're, they're quiet. They're kind of big, but they're, they're quiet. And there's no point in someone having the service if they're going to be going in and out, in and out. That's not what's being offered.
That's not typically how those types of stores on the board-
It's not a garage to come, go back and forth.
And just for peace of mind, one more time, to reiterate what Linda said earlier, is if it does start taking off in those directions, this board can reopen the public hearing. You can request this board to reopen the public hearing, and we'll get to the root cause of what's, what's happening out there. Ask them to provide definitive data, and then make decisions from there, which may be a range of things. So I think you can take some, I'd ask you to probably realize you can take some solace in that just because we close everything, or we decide that we are going to approve it, it still remains available for you to be able to come back before us and ask us to revisit it if it gets out of control.
So not, I'm not saying we have, all complaints would come back to the board and be revisited if-
I, I think probably the first thing we're always going, I think the first thing we're always going to ask is, one, make sure you notify the applicant about what's going on. That's just, that's just the neighborly process. But if they're turning a deaf ear toward you, then realize there is another mechanism under which you, you can get some satisfaction that will, that someone else is going to listen to what's going on, and that would be to come back before this board. But certainly the first thing we're going to ask you is, have you tried to work with the applicant to resolve the issue? So does that kind of help?
Yeah, a lot of the conditions that we mentioned are just concerns of the neighborhoods that wanted noted.
No. And, and I think we appreciate that. And that's one of the things why we were looking for a business plan to have been before us tonight, which, which may have addressed some of these issues straight out forward.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if I could recommend two conditions for your consideration that are generally for more intensive uses, but my client would be happy to accept them as conditions, is, you know, if the board wanted to require that there be a manager's cellphone on file and provided to the neighborhood, that would be acceptable. And I think also if the board wanted to collect a vehicle log, in and out log, for a year or two, that's certainly something that we'd be happy to submit.
Those-
What did you say?
A vehicle logs, so you could see, okay, 10 cars in May and six in June and-
So we review it again after a first?
Yeah, whenever, I mean, it's typical, that's, you know, that's definitely, that's typically for a much more intensive use, but we're happy to provide those logs at an appropriate interval, you know, in January or something for each year, so that the board can see what the actual in and out is.
Yeah, for probably about two years' worth of time, maybe. Okay. So I'm just going to turn to Andrew and Leslie. Are you getting a good feel for where we're all heading to here? Okay, good. Hi.
Hey, Christopher Skahel, 75 Bartlett Road, 77 Bartlett Road. I just wondered why are we here when Mr. Cohen is asking that the fact that he actually doesn't need to represent the applicant? So I'm just trying to find out exactly why we are here. If Mr. Cohen just stood up and said, well, he doesn't actually need any reliefs.
Yeah, just let me clarify that. I think it's, I'm not entirely sure whether we need the parking relief or not, and we're asking for it just in case. But because it's an MCD, it's not an MCD, I believe the only relief that we need is that storage and warehousing itself requires a special permit no matter what under the use chart. So that's actually what we're here for. And that special permit is not actually a relief, it's just an opportunity for the board to apply conditions to that permit, which I think is wise of the board to include in the use chart.
Excellent. Excellent. So we're just here to address the storage, the storage situation, by the sounds of it. Is that what we're saying?
Well, he's asking for a waiver of the, the commercial spaces because there are already spaces in-
I'm just trying to, just trying to understand exactly why we're here.
He's asking for a waiver of the commercial spaces anyway, and asking for a special permit.
But he's just saying, we're not here for a waiver of parking, we're here for specials, a special permit for storage. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
So let's, let's look at the storage situation. We have 20 cars, okay? Potential of 60 cars, because you've got a basement.
No basement, just 30 cars.
There will be a basement, believe me, there'll be a basement. So there's potential of 60 cars, okay? And let's just go down the road and say that, you know what? A very wealthy man calls you up, and I'm sure none of you caretakers, any way, shape, or form, a very wealthy man calls you up and says, I'm flying in at 5:00, I want my car. He's your client, and you say, no, I'm not getting your car. One of 60. You as a caretaker is telling your very wealthy client that, no, I'm not going to get your car till 8:00. I'm flying in at 5:00, I want my car. What do they say? No, I'm not getting it? I don't know. I know I caretake. My client's asked me to do something? Typically, you have to do it.
Right. I'd be happy to address both of those points. There is no basement being applied for. If a basement was applied for, it would have to be a new permit before you. So we, we are showing is up to 20 cars with no lifts, and potentially 28 or 30 cars if you put, if you put those lifts in.
Mr. Cohen, let's, let's just aside on a figure right now.
Up to 30.
Great, thank you.
Up to 30 or 20?
Up to 30.
That's why I'm asking you to do that.
So what is it, 29, 25, 30?
Up to 30.
So it's going to be 30? Just to make sure. That's the decision?
Can I say something, please?
Be anything under 30.
All right, all right.
No, let me just say something. What if there's 30 smart cars? There's room for 30 more. I mean, car sizes, car sizes change.
Totally agree with you.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should-
You're not helping.
I don't think we should put a hard number.
You shouldn't be helping.
Unless-
Excuse me, hold on, hold on. This isn't a free-for-all. Your comments are all going to be addressed to the chair. Thank you. So when Mr. Lowell has the floor, I don't expect sidebar, but anyways.
No, I'm just saying, it's getting, you know, a little arbitrary here with the conversation. I think that the lifts are going to add cars. We know that. To put a basement underneath, to say that the applicant's going to put a basement in when the applicant's saying he's not, we can't, we have to take the applicant at its word. Plus, to put a basement and have a weight of cars on top of the floor would cost the man a million, zillions of dollars. I don't think he's going to be doing that.
Excuse me, will you, Mr. Lowell has the floor? Thank you. I will come back to you.
So I'm just saying, I mean, you know, let's just try to just keep the conversation at the realistic point of what the applicant is asking for. I mean, every car is a different size.
Absolutely.
Okay? So that's all I'm saying.
You said up to 30.
He was up to 30, that's his.
Right. If we had all smart cars and it was half-empty, we might come back, but I, that's not what we're talking about tonight. Mr. Skahel's second point I actually think is very important, which is that the caretakers don't have access to the building if those are the people picking up the cars. In the same way that if I get here at 11:00 at night and I want to go to Crosswinds and get a hamburger, and I show up and they say the kitchen's closed, they don't care how rich you are, they don't make you a hamburger. The kitchen's closed. And this is just another business, I, actually, I bet Chris would-
Let me, let me, let me just comment on that, because that's not necessarily true.
I, I take it back. I'm sure Chris would. But, but we expect the commission, the board, to have hours of operation limitations, and that those would be respected, and if they're not respected, then we would expect to be dragged before the zoning enforcement officer and the board for not following the rules. And so the great thing about this facility is that because it's essentially long-term dead storage, nobody is just showing up to get their car. These are people mostly from off-island who are coming in on planes or boats, they're making logistical travel arrangements, they know well in advance when they're getting here, they're going to have plenty of notice. You know, I'm not putting my car there and going back and forth every day. These are people who know when they're coming well in advance.
Okay. Did you have anything else, sir?
No, just, I, so I just want to verify this. So there's going to be a maximum of 30 cars parked there?
That is, that is, according to Mr. Cohen, that is what we are going to be presented with.
If, if the commission wants to put that restriction on, that's an acceptable restriction, and if it turns out we want to do something different later, we would have to come back to the board.
And I, I for one, sitting on this board, think there's a great deal of prudency, just to start with the equation, because I agree with you. We've heard 20, we've heard 28, 29. That's why I think having an upper number at this point, just to start with, doesn't mean it can't come back and reopen.
Absolutely.
But that at least gives us a threshold to start with.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the, we're all hearing 30 now.
Tremendous. So there'll be 30 cars. And when, when, when Mr. Sullivan and I, I dearly enjoy Mr. Sullivan's company, and I wish him nothing but the best with this, with this, with this venture, and I'm sure he'll do exceptionally well. When Mr. Sullivan does actually do very, very well, the requirement for more cars will be inundated, he will be inundated with people that are looking for storage. Inundated, as he knows, and that's why he's doing it, and I truly wish him the best somewhere else. I truly believe that this road, Marble Way, is nothing like Young's Way. Nothing whatsoever. Nothing like Young's Way was before Young's Way was developed, in, in any way, shape, or form. So to use Young's Way as an example of how this road is going to go is not the right, right example.
Yeah.
And if we could possibly present another, another situation, that would be great. That is similar to this. Does anybody know of one?
Dead storage is dead storage.
He's talking about the comparison.
Yeah, I'm looking for a comparison, other than Young's Way. I'm just looking to see something where a gentleman called Billy Cassidy was forced to, to develop this in a, in a, in a family fashion, and did an incredible job and went through an awful lot of hardship to, to develop this in a family fashion. And we're standing here now saying, what a waste of his time, and your time. Because now the family fashion is gone. You would not call Young's Way a family environment.
What side of the road is?
No. It never was, never was. Maybe, maybe 50 years ago, before I got here. But 30 years ago, it wasn't. And nothing in comparison to what has gone on down there. So I'm asking, is there another area?
Yeah, please.
I, I think that question is getting a little bit irrelevant here. The zoning, this particular area, as was already explained, was zoned, commercial on one side, residential on the other side. That existed way before any other development. There was a discussion before the board that would have put way more houses, the road was going to be paved at that point. I mean, I, there was a discussion back and forth, should the road be improved or should the road not be improved? But it's sort of, it's becoming like, we don't want the road improved, and then we don't want anything else to happen there. RC2 would have allowed significant residential density, would have allowed retail, restaurant, all kinds of other options that have all been scaled back. Every one of them has been scaled back. So I, I think the, the application before you for dead storage is highly different than some of the other applications for standard commercial that we have. It certainly doesn't bring the, I mean, the uses were picked for C-Tech to reduce the amount of customers and other, other activities coming on. And from what they've just explained, it seems like it's one of the most benign uses that I can think of. So I, I don't know what this, this continuing, there are situations across Nantucket where there's residential on one side and commercial on the other. Sparks Avenue is a good one. The people that live on Sparks Avenue have a bunch of commercial use across the street.
And as you'll see, they've all moved.
Well, I know, and I'm no fan of, of that, but that zoning pattern existed, was put in place in 1972, and that's what we have to work with.
And so commercial is going to be-
Wherever the commercial is left on Nantucket, we've squeezed it into oblivion. There's going to be, where the commercial ends, there's going to be residential across the street. There's no other way to do it unless you end it at the water. So somewhere, somehow, somebody's residences are going to be across from the tail end of a commercial zone, because what goes in between a residential and a commercial zone? A street. So it's going to exist, and it's going to exist in these pockets of commercial that still exist for everybody on Bartlett Road is year-round. Let's put it that way. Everybody on Macy's and Pine, whatever it is, and Mary Ann, year-round people, right next to residences, right next to commercial. Somewhere that line has to be drawn to separate the commercial from the residential, and somebody's going to be on that cusp, somewhere, everywhere. Boynton Lane, 30 Acres Lane, it's going to be happening all over the place. And what's fortunate is that we've got Dimmick's on Bartlett, across on the other side of Bartlett from you guys. And he could have gone all commercial. It could have been a real squirrely in there. And he has agreed to R5, and certain parts of it's remaining residential. So those guys are going to be residential on one side of his street, Andrew, and I think it's commercial on the other side. So they have to be next door, somebody has to be that one across the street from the end of the residential-commercial thing. So in your case, it's just, it happens to work out that way because it actually developed as commercial properties back in the 80s. When I was at the zoning board, we were doing permits up and down Bartlett Road for, for Metcalf, for everybody on Bartlett Road, all through the 80s and 90s, before you guys were there, before Dimmick did anything across the street. It just is the way it developed, because it was the only affordable commercial land that year-round people could get. So it, it's developed in a hodgepodge, but it was also residential properties that you guys could afford for whether it's a covenant or not. So it's kind of a, an interesting mix, but it's, it's a mix, and it's going to remain a mix to some extent.
Just to give you a point of perspective for the board, I actually live in an RC2 zoning.
You still RC2?
I actually live, did, did you rezone it to C-Tech? 77 and 75 Bartlett Road.
You're in C-Tech.
The C-Tech now. I actually purchased that because I, because it was an RC2 zoning, because I actually liked the idea, the fact that you could actually live like with a little bit of commercial next to it, and so on and so forth. But I'm not here to argue the fact that C-Tech or RC2 or anything like that. I understand you've done what you've done, but what we're asking for is the fact that we believe that what is applied for by the applicant and by the next applicant will have a serious detrimental effect on the neighborhood. And anybody that sits here and listens to what's going on, and watch what's going on, cannot deny that. I'm not saying C-Tech is what it is, or I'm not arguing about the C-Tech, but what is being applied for is detrimental to the area. And as the planning board, one must appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diane?
I had just a description as being part of the family that stores cars.
Our thing is on.
And you have to-
Diane, turn your thing on.
It's on, just face toward the microphone, dear. It's a little hard to hear. That's okay.
When somebody wants a car, there's no way that you're not going to have to take a car or so out to get the car that you want, because that's the way you can load that many cars in. So there will be times where you're going to have to have a couple of cars outside, just so you can move things around. The second question I had when I was reviewing this stuff before is, a question came up about an apartment and people living upstairs on the second floor. If they're up there, then I would not think that the cars could be up on a lift underneath and, I'm not sure, but it just seems like they're going to run out of space. So are, is there a proposition of having a five-bedroom living space up on the second floor?
They have two apartments up there.
Let's just turn to the applicant, because they feel as though they can make that work. Go ahead.
There are two apartments on the second floor in the plan. One is a three-bedroom, one is a two-bedroom. And the plan at the moment with a lift could fit a, two cars on top of each other, like two smart cars or two sedan-type cars, not two SUV-type cars. And would still fit within the way the designer drew the plan.
It seemed to be questioned at some time whether that was a legal thing to do. I don't know, because I don't know all the ins and outs of the zoning there. But you can't say that there won't be any cars ever parked out in front of the building because you're just going to have to, to be able to move around. It's what you have to do.
I'm happy if the board wants to say that only the residential cars can be parked overnight outside. So then the business cars won't be parked outside overnight. There'll be no exterior storage of, but yes, I'll have to move cars out, shuffle them around.
Shuffle them around.
Absolutely.
You don't want somebody to look and say, hey, there are ten cars out here, because I know what happens.
Yeah, I wouldn't intend on leaving the property with anything out, because the whole concept is that you can give me your car and it'll be inside, weather-protected, safe, secure, so I wouldn't leave the site or whomever was helping me with stuff out. The residential spots, they would stay overnight outside.
All set. Sir? Now, you've got, no, you've got the floor.
My name's Tom Schroeder. I live directly across the street from the two properties that are being developed and that we're talking about tonight. What I'd like to talk about is, I'm a businessman. I support commercial business, and I think the residents here also support the commercial business. And what we're looking at is the potential of taking a neighborhood that's residential and changing it. I understand that it's C-Tech zoning. It used to be RC2. That was six years ago. I don't understand why we keep on going back and comparing it. It's not RC2 anymore, it's just C-Tech. So what would help me and everybody here is to clarify what C-Tech is and what we can do to make it so that our residential area is not changed in a way, why can't we work together? One thing I'd like to know is, how many businesses can you have on a piece of property that's C-Tech?
Ken, all right, so from a technical perspective, okay. But I'm getting a little concerned with this conversation is tracking to, because I keep hearing, we want the neighborhood to be residential. This is C-Tech, which has a commercial component to it. So, and this was approved at town meeting, all right? So as much as you keep saying, we want residential, we want residential, we want residential, and I kind of keep hearing that as an undertone here. I'm afraid people aren't recognizing what is available to this applicant in a C-Tech zone, which they are in. You can't say to the applicant, you're in C-Tech, we will only force you to be residential. That is a possible, again, the applicant has that right to make it residential if they want. They have that absolute right. But realistically, they also have rights under the C-Tech zone. And that's where I want to go back to staff.
Mr. Chairman, to move this along, I think what we need to be talking about is, what are the conditions that need to be put on this? Unless the board is considering a denial of this. So the kind of conditions that we've already talked about are no exterior storage, these are all conditions that are enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer. If they're violating them, there's a fine and other things that come along with that. So there's no exterior storage, they've already offered a manager, a vehicle log, the sewer connection to somehow participate in road maintenance, the screening plan, if there needs to be any specific details about that. Obviously, there's a lighting plan that they have to comply with about dark skies. There's no parking on Marble Way. We can limit the amount of cars that are there, and thirty seems to be the number you've talked about. The plan does not show a basement, so that would be a condition that no basement would be installed unless they come back. And there's no long-term storage at all outside. The hours of operation, if there needs to be changes to those, that's something you all need to discuss. What other conditions are we talking about?
And Mr. Cohen, I want to be clear at this point, you said your hours of operation are, I think you've already said, I'm just going to have you repeat it for the record.
Proposed at eight to six-thirty.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I just want to finish up.
Yeah, please.
I think that there's a solution to the traffic problem that we're talking about. All the businesses on Bartlett Road are accessed from Bartlett Road. Mark Williams Storage, he passes, the people pass by maybe one residence, we're talking about the whole road of all the residences. Neil Patterson, the whole crew, it all accesses from Bartlett Road. Why can't we find a way to access those two lots from Bartlett Road? And it's possible, because there's a driveway that separates two properties and goes right up to the boundary. That's one way.
All right, all right.
And I just have a couple more things I'd like to say just before I sit down.
Please.
When was the last time you saw a three-year-old riding a bike down Young's Way?
Do you have, I'm going to let you finish your line of question before I get the board re-engaging you back and forth, so please.
I think that another way to help the problem is to limit the number of businesses per lot. And that would help people. Mr. Sullivan's building here is for parked cars. He will put up this building, and the potential down the road of changing the business, yes, it does have to go through the planning board, but you folks may not be here. There may be a board here that's in favor of having five businesses in there. That's what the concern is here. So I think the number of businesses would help to, you know, to limit a number of businesses in a C-Tech zone that's abutting a residential zone.
I think, all right, was there, thank you, I'm going to let staff answer that, because this boils into a legal issue.
We can put that requirement that there is a single business, no additional businesses will operate on this particular lot unless the planning. No, that's not, it has to be addressed on a.
On an individual lot.
On the properties.
Right, right.
But that is a condition that I wouldn't think, would you object to the condition? There'd be one business operating on the property?
I don't have an issue for my existence in the property, but I don't, you know, I don't want to limit myself outside of, I'm limited by the C-Tech zoning, so I would prefer to stay within the, what is by right within the C-Tech zoning. But, you know, as long as I'm under my special permit, I have no issue with one business at the location.
From coming back, no matter how bad the permits were, or whatever the permits were, no one under state law can be prevented from coming back, whether it's this owner, whether it's an owner ten years from now, from coming back to the planning board and asking for modifications to be made to the permit. We can't say you can't do that. But for our purposes, we could condition it on one entity on the property. For this, under this special permit. That's what he's limited to.
I don't have a problem with that condition, except for the fact that it's redundant of the permit that's applied for to begin with, which I don't love unnecessary conditions or redundant conditions, but it's not objectionable, because it's true even if you don't say it.
Go ahead.
I think the reason it's not, Mr. Cohen, is that there's certain accessory uses that are allowed and other things that there would be an agreement not to attach to the special permit. So it's not a permanent restriction on the land, but it is as long as the special permit is in operation.
Sure, that is an acceptable condition.
Ms. McGlothlin? I'm going to go to you, because I know you're here to say you want to leave in a minute.
Because of personal reasons, I had one quick comment, that the staff has done a wonderful job on this, and they asked ten questions in here. There are three hundred and seventy-five pages, I've read most of them, and I can't find where they have answered those fourteen questions. So I'd like to leave it at that. I would like to see something on those individual questions, all fourteen of answers by the applicant by the next meeting.
I think Mr. McGlothlin's on the next application, that we only have one.
I think you are too.
And I believe I answered them.
Thank you, thank you. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Todd Stout. I'm actually one of those people that benefited from the RC2, small-size, affordable. I can appreciate everyone's concerns about that, you know, not only in developing that small parcel of property, but being beside other businesses that are on small parcels of property and how they affect each other, you know? I just had one quick question about, and I'm not familiar with this ancillary dwelling and these microhouses that they're starting to propose, but I think with some of these buildings that are this big, that it might be, this might set a precedent for that, to say that in the future, there shouldn't be another dwelling added, even though, I mean, housing is ultimately a huge issue. And I see these small lots being, you know, small ancillary dwellings being proposed, and people talking about, you know, how to put a little house here on the corner of a property. This isn't a lot of ground cover for what's allowed under the C-Tech zoning. So my question is, is there ever going to be a secondary dwelling put on this property?
C-Tech allows up to four apartments, and we're only proposing two. So there would be, but there's no proposal to add anywhere dwellings, essentially because the septic system and the open space and the parking requirements don't require it. And since it's not proposed in the application, it would need to come back if that ever were going to happen. It couldn't happen without sewer being put in, and even after sewer being put in, it would have to come before this board, whereas, you know, a lot of other uses, it would happen by right.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Kevin, good evening.
Hi, everybody, my name's Kevin Dugan, I have a piece of property at Six Sleepy Hollow. And a lot of the conditions that you folks have talked about tonight, I had written down here to ask you about. So am I correct, though, in understanding that you folks are the ones that put the conditions on, is that correct? Okay. As many as you want, and is this the only time to put the conditions on?
You can open the public hearing again.
Okay, all right, can I request a condition of the board?
Sure.
Because this is going to result in more obvious traffic, I don't care if there's thirty cars or ten cars or whatever, it's going to be more traffic. Okay, we've accepted that. Can there be a condition in there that as a result of one new business, you know, being responsible for the excessive traffic, that they can contribute towards maintaining the road? I mean, I think that's very important, and not unreasonable, certainly.
Go ahead.
I'm more than happy to contribute to the road, and if you have a system set up, I'm more than happy to contribute it, and I would be willing to contribute it more than one lot share, if you wanted, versus if a residential, if you have one, if you have twelve lots and everybody's doing one twelfth, I'd be willing to do two twelfths, to represent two lots, but if I was added traffic.
Well, I was more in thinking that the applicant would be responsible for maintaining the road. Yeah, well, okay. And, you know, we keep hearing. We keep hearing about, you know, your relatives' building at the other end of the street, and I walk by there or drive by there every day.
Mr. Dugan, before, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't want to leave this as kind of like an open-ended type thing. So where are we tracking with the conversation about this?
Let me finish my sentence and you'll know.
All right, perfect, thank you, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
No problem. So I go by there all the time. I have never, been there eleven years, seen a car inside there, except for the fact of a nineteen forty-two or fifty-two Jeep Willys that's in there with the license plate Pack Rat. I just happened to wander in there the other day. And the only other things that I see in those buildings are sailboats, old antique custom-type sailboats. So I'm not sure if that's a good comparison, whether it is or not, I'm just mentioning it.
Kevin, he's doing boats now, which is why there's, everybody's been kicked to the curb, basically, which is why there's a need for more vehicle storage barns, like Holgate's used to be, like Island Motors used to be, which was a Mammoth Building before and right behind you guys. So things have changed.
Because we're getting off tangent, please, please.
Was that off tangent? I didn't mean it to be.
The sidebar from, we're getting off tangent here, that's, I'm trying to get us focused. Please.
Okay, I guess that's all I have then, but I just want to mainly find out who does the condition, but I guess this is you first.
Kevin, can I ask one question? Do you have a homeowners association out there?
No.
No, they don't.
You don't.
See, I think that, and we can't require that to happen, but we've had other areas like Squam. I know that doesn't fit this, but I'm just using it as a comparison, that they've created a system for maintenance and for what they want the road to be like, in a sense like, that road is so bumpy, I don't go down Marble Way on purpose, because it's terrible. You guys like it terrible, but you want it maintained at the same time? Then maybe you guys could get together with what you want done and have a kind of a, maybe today's version of a homeowner's to some degree, but we can't require the applicant to do that. But I think that that would be a smart move in this area's, with concerns with what's going on over there, and commercial on one side and residential on the other.
I strongly agree with you. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, briefly, sir.
Just to be responsive, obviously, my client doesn't want to be responsible for a hundred percent of maintenance of the road, but if the commission wanted to require grading of the road before receiving a CO or something, you know, that kind of condition would be more than acceptable. Obviously, we want to do it post-construction.
Absolutely, thank you. Did you have, please?
Rob Morganstern, One Marble Way. Just to make this quick, I agree with everything my neighbors say, have the same concerns. I realize Brian's business is low-impact, but I think this all stems from recent developments in the next applicant, we're all, we feel like we've just been bombarded on Marble Way. And I know it's, you know, C-Tech on one side, residential on the other, but it's still affecting the residential. And one of the main bullet points in the planning board's charter is to protect the quality of residential districts. So I think that's kind of where everyone has concerns, so. I know it's one side of C-Tech, one side's residential, but we're still highly affected by both these businesses. That's it.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on this?
I think that's a point well-taken, but we also conversely have to protect the limited commercial that we have left and try to get commercial and residential to live side-by-side. So rather benign uses or low-key uses type of thing next to a residential, but we have to, we have to say, it's commercial here and it's residential here, and somewhere that's going to meet, and not happily sometimes. So that's the dichotomy here. We're trying to come up with a bunch of conditions to really tighten this thing up so it can live quietly next to a bunch of residential properties without taking away the rights to have a commercial property. So this is what we're struggling with at the moment. We're not ignoring everything everybody says about their residences. I mean, I live out next to Augie's Junkyard. So we're not ignoring the fact that that exists, but we have a reality here that it's C-Tech, and they have a right to a commercial business there. It's what do they have, what's going to work the best for you guys and for the commercial to coexist, basically. That could be five hundred pounds of trees every square inch.
Excuse me, thank you, I'll recognize you, but it doesn't mean you get to pop up and just say, I will recognize you.
I would just like to say, since Sleepy Hollow, can the conditions for Marble Way be applied to Sleepy Hollow too, as it's the only, like, no parking, as it's the only road that can be accessed from Marble Way? We just don't want any marble saying, oh, we can't park here, but we can park here. That's all, as one of the conditions.
Thing off the property that belongs to this property stays on the property. They're not going to get around not parking on Marble Way by going across the street and parking on Sleepy Hollow. Absolutely not. And as owners of Sleepy Hollow, you have the right to have the car towed if somebody pulls that stunt. You have complete control over your road.
Okay, thank you.
Come on down, come on down. Thank you.
Tom Schroeder, Nine Marble Way, right across the street from the development. I just wanted to say that everybody in this room, I think, should have an opportunity to tell or talk about their concerns. It seems as though when I've come up, we're getting off track, and when Kevin's gone up, we're getting off track of where you'd like this meeting to go. I don't think that's fair to us as residents. I mean, you interrupted Kevin saying that we're getting off track here and there, and he was talking about something relevant to what we are addressing.
Mr. Schroeder, for the record, I'm going to correct what you've just said at this point. It was actually one of my board members who was tracking us onto a tangent. When Mr. Dugan was up, I wanted to make sure his concern was being addressed about what the applicant would be willing to do with the roadway. And I'm afraid, again, I want to make sure that what was happening with him was being addressed. So respectfully, that's where I was coming from at this point, and I'm sorry if you've misunderstood that, sir. But I haven't, I haven't been here asking you guys to come forward just to move you along. So I'm going to take a little bit of exception to where you're heading with at this point, because I do take that part of this job very seriously, that the public does have a right to ask certain questions of things. They absolutely do.
Okay, I just wanted to state that everybody here should have an opinion and be able to speak.
And I think, sir, and respectfully, sir, I think I've been asking for those. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this? Okay. Board members or staff, did you have anything else, Andrew? I'm sorry, I just saw you pulling the microphone forward. All right. So what is it that this board would like to do at this point? Actually, I'd like staff, I think staff has done that once. And since they're the ones that are going to be composing this, if you need to hear it again, I'm going to ask them to do it.
No, I've got, I've got that. So where, where are you, the board? Where are we headed with this?
This is what I'm trying to ascertain from the board right now. Well, what you need to do at this point is if you want more public testimony, you're, we can certainly do that. I haven't seen anyone else step forward at this point. Okay. So, board members, you've got to kind of make a decision here about where you'd like to track this. Andrew, I just have one question for you.
Yep.
Since Mr. McGlaughlin left, this is a special permit. Does that require two alternates to sit on this to make the board of five or, yeah, okay, I just wanted to be clear. I'm sorry.
So anyway, conditions that we've talked about tonight is that there's no exterior storage of any kind. There's no long-term vehicular storage outside. It's only for, as Ms. Coombs brought up about moving the vehicles back and forth. There is the manager. Well, other than the apartments, we're talking about the commercials. So the vehicle log, the participation in the road maintenance, so either that's, either that's an annual grading or a contribution is typically what we would ask for. So either they conduct an annual grading or make a contribution to the group.
But Andrew, in that section, put down that before you get the CO, he would grade the road after construction and before the CO, so that road is put back to a reasonable state.
And also how far to the entrance to Somerset?
Yeah, which direction do I go? Would I go Bartlett to the property or would I go on?
Gazeuntide.
Going Bartlett to the entrance.
Of the property.
Right. We'll put that in. The screening plan that is shown talks about a combination of different material, I mean, different species and trees. Do we, does the board need anything further? Is there fencing of any kind being proposed? Or security fencing or anything like that?
I wasn't planning any at this time. I, my intention was Leland Cypress. So it's thick, full, and year-round.
Okay. So the lighting we've talked about must comply with our, with our local bylaw. There's no parking on any of the streets, Marble Way, Sleepy Hall, or outside of the facility or in the right-of-way in between. So, so all, all parking is onsite only.
Yes.
There's no more than 30 cars. There's no basement to be constructed.
Sir?
Does that include, like, a utility room? Okay, I just want to make sure I can do a utility room for furnace and.
No, no commercial use.
There's no further, there's basically one business being operated out of the site and no additional businesses or housing units allowed under the special permit.
Management, Andrew, I have management written down here.
The manager is provided. The hours of operation are eight to 6:30. No vehicles will be retrieved outside of those hours. Did I miss anything?
I just want to clarify what the residential units are not restricted by the one business thing. They don't have to be employees of that business. It's only one business for the commercial use.
So the only other conditions that Andrew didn't mention were maintaining the vehicle log. That the planning board will review the status of the special permit after one year. We've traditionally done one year and then extended it for a year and stopped if everything's going well. That the applicant agrees to connect a sewer when it's available. And that was it.
Where did we end up on the grading of the road? It was one time before the CO?
Just.
Once before the CO and that you would contribute to the maintenance account for the neighborhood. Annually. You'd contribute annually.
I'm happy to participate in whatever they come up with.
The requirement would be to participate in whatever private road maintenance organization is formed. That would be fine.
Okay. Is there anything that we haven't covered at this point? I think, no, I think that's the list of conditions. I see Mr. Cohen saying we're there.
They all work.
Yep. So again, the question is, do you want to keep this open? And I'd like to know if you are going to keep this open as to why. Otherwise, what is the pleasure of the board in terms of acting on this application?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I need to activate two people for this. Carl, I'm going to put you on this. Di, I'm going to put you on this. Okay? All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure. I didn't want to forget that. All right. So the motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously and the pleasure of the board at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve this application per, subject to all of those conditions.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that? Ma'am?
It's going to be reviewed?
Yes, yes.
At this time?
Yes. One year from operating, opening operation.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Not hear anything else. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next application before us at this point is 64-15, which is Russell Simpson on six Marble Way for the applicant. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So we are back again after pulling our first application. Kind of felt the, the impact from the owners, their concerns, their traffic issues. Just, just a nice neighborhood scenario. So we've removed the two apartment buildings that we applied for with the HDC, taken our second building and turned it into a contractor shop like the first, which was HDC-approved along with screening and several other conditions that I recall. So to go over some of the questions that you guys emailed, I apologize for not doing it earlier. The driveway width will be 15 feet. The traffic, parking calculations, drainage calculations, and site plan will all be revised to address the issues that you guys have with those questions. Hour of operations are simple. Doors closed between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Otherwise, we would follow all bylaws in terms of noise ordinance. The lighting plan, we're happy to subject ourselves to meet the town bylaws as well, to keep it friendly, nice, lights pointing towards the ground. The open space, I believe we have a little above 30%, about 33%. And then question number 10, the plan does not provide the existing condition of the vegetation, but we do have an HDC-approved screening, which is pretty aggressive and removes, I would say, 85% view of the property unless you're directly in front of the driveway.
An offense. I need to get something clear.
Was there anything else, sir?
No, not at all. Just questions if you have any.
I think you're going to have to, go ahead.
Russell, did you say you removed the other mixed-use building?
So we weighed the rewards or the cost benefit. And it just didn't seem applicable in terms of cost and expense versus what you'd get from another shop. And then after hearing about all the neighbors and the complaints and the issues that it was bringing up, I'm just simply moving to get away from the tenants that would be there, bring the extra traffic, you know, nighttime concerns, and just make it a little easier design, a little easier to deal with. Basically making it a, an eight to five operation only.
In the shop area?
That's correct.
And the building that you're proposing for the shop is the same building that the HDC approved?
So I'm applying for two buildings. We do not have a site plan yet because we haven't gotten that far. The second building that was approved, building number two, which was the two office spaces and two apartments, I'm going to move to change those to contractor shop space, just like building number one, which was HDC-approved.
But the building number one, is that changing?
That's not changing, moving, or doing anything other than what you've already approved on the HDC board.
Okay. So there's no residences on the property at all anymore?
They've all been eliminated.
Okay. So how many shops would be on the lot total now? Five?
There would be, correct, five garage spaces. I would propose to have between two and three businesses there, including my own. And I would be happy to be limited to that.
So three businesses, including yours. So two other guys and you?
Correct. And it may be as little as two. The cost analysis would have to be done to figure that out.
And all the parking is going to be provided on site?
The parking, correct, will be provided on site and it will relatively remain the same. We probably would lose a space or two at that point and gain more open space or more grassy areas, given that the apartments are not there and we're not required to have as much.
And the office space was one per 200 and the garage space is one per 900?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. That's it for me at the moment.
Anyone else on the board have any questions at this point?
So the reason you're here instead of being, one more, the reason you're here instead of, as a by right, is because you are, instead of 3,920, you're going to be what, 4,000 and change?
I think the previous HDC application was 3,700 and change, and we've moved to 4,050. So just slightly larger shop space than would have been provided by the residential, commercial, mixed-use building that was there.
Okay. That's the only thing I was missing. Okay.
A much smaller building than the first approved.
C-Tech, Andrew, is a 40%, 50%, 40%? Okay.
Okay. You all set now?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions at this point? So I guess on the site plan, I'm not seeing a parking configuration at the moment.
It's there. The application process is done quickly and we may not have it in there. But we've done an extensive study with a fully engineered site that meets all the criteria by the state, the town, and we just simply have to provide it.
Andrew, I'm just going to.
I'm looking at page 215, which is that, that's your site plan, the concept design? I mean, I can see it's, it's, it looks like there's landscaping and does that pretty much show it?
So what you're looking at is what was HDC-approved and that does clarify everything that would, it would probably change, you know, one spot, two spots, and the locations of everything would remain relatively the same.
Yeah, because I'm not seeing any of that.
I can see that there, it looks to me like there's three new trees in the front and some sort of grass. A gate, which is discussed, a six-foot board fence is running along the back property line. Is that right?
That's correct. I think Andrew has the actual HDC plan in his hands. Because it shows parking, vegetation, screenage, fences, driveway.
Short of staff bringing something, there's nothing in our packet to.
It's page 215 of your packet. It's very, very light.
Yeah, because I can.
I know the HCC plan. This isn't, it was very detailed and very specific.
Yeah, because I can't make heads or tails out of this plan when I look at it. It's that light. So how many parking spaces total?
I think right now, seven were proposed and I would, I think it would move to five or six. At that point, we don't need handicap and that would be removed. That's two spaces essentially.
All right. So just for the board's identification, how many parking spaces are we talking about?
Five.
Five. Okay. And if we were to, with three shops that you're going to have in there, you're saying two to three. We're going, we'll go to three at the moment, just so we have a number to work with.
Okay.
Traffic generation?
We can, we can provide that report once it's done by the civil engineer.
Okay, because I think that's, I think, given just some of the responses from the neighbors and stuff as well and not having a good sense on the site plan, I think as one member of the board, I'd like to have that information before me, before making a decision on the application. Because I think that, that's kind of integral. Andrew, do you have information from Ed Pesci on drainage? Or is that something that still has to be worked out as well, too? Go ahead.
Right. So that's not, that's not been required?
Well, no, we haven't done it.
No, we don't, we don't have Ed Pesci reviewing this.
Okay. So is, is the drainage adequate, I think is what we're going to boil down to here since that was also a question that was raised in the staff report.
It is gravel. I can actually elaborate on that. The, the previous plan that required the two buildings, we had a complete engineered plan that showed parking, drainage, vegetation, space requirements for handicap. It absolutely met all state and town criteria without any question. It was a pretty extensive plan. I do apologize for not having it in. I will lecture the applicant.
Okie doke. Open space for the project? I'm not quite.
Thirty-three right now. And if parking goes down, it would move up slightly.
Okay. And so, Andrew, do we require a site plan that's going to have setbacks, et cetera? Or do you have that in some iteration through other board applications such as the HDC?
Typically, you, you're required to sign a final site plan within a certain time period. So at this draft stage, you know, we have, we have this, we have this, I guess, which has been submitted to the HDC. So if there's any further changes, our requirement is typically, that a final site plan is submitted and signed within a certain period of time.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the board? Do you have anything from your perspective, sir?
Basement areas in these buildings, are these, will basements be built?
None proposed. I don't plan on it. Just shop space.
You heard the conditions that we just put on Sully's.
I was paying attention.
Was there anything in there that? got weird? For your particular thing?
The only thing that conflicted was, they were trying to limit the number of businesses being on the property, and clearly I would not agree with that. But the rest of it, I was pretty happy with what they had to say. Happy to improve the road. Big screening, like the HDC has already approved, aggressive screening, if you look at it, when you do get the site plan.
So no problems with parking on Marble Way? You did say three businesses, right?
Yeah. If somebody parks there, I'd call the tow truck. I want a nice friendly neighborhood.
I understand. And working with the Homeowners Association for roadway maintenance?
Happy to do that.
Everything except for the one permit.
I'm sorry?
Everything but one business. He said he could do all the rest of it.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, though, if you would agree to no more than three businesses?
Correct. I would, I would not want to be limited to the one that the neighbors asked for with Sully's property. Three would be my number. Including my own.
Right.
And you're okay with the hours? It was eight to 6:30?
Eight to five is what you're saying?
I said doors shut from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, or 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
I got it. So 8:00 AM to 5:00.
And then doors open during the day.
I just have one question. Having written, Leslie, Andrew, having written or sat on all of the special permits on Bartlett Road when I was with the ZBA, the one thing that they did require, because there were scattered older residences in the neighborhood, stars, people like that, was that when equipment was being run, like planers or saws or something along those lines, the doors were closed and the buildings, I believe Todd had to do that, the buildings were ventilated. So there wasn't what's going on on Perry Lane when everybody's got their shop doors open and their run-and-power equipment, and like nine different shops. They did ask that when heavy equipment was being used inside, you know, like shop and milling and stuff like that, if that's what's going to be going on here, that the doors be closed to minimize the noise and that they just be air-conditioned or ventilated somehow. Is that something that's possible?
I'm happy to comply with that. That's not that big a deal. Just so the board can hear it again, the primary use of these is really, it's an office with a contractor that sits on his desk all day and with the option to use it as a shop. My business would certainly not have men there eight hours a day, or trucks coming in and out. The men would not stop there every morning. They would go directly to their job site. And I'm looking for applicants or renters that are going to be in the same scenario so that I don't have to listen to noise, because I'm going to be sitting in there in an office and trying to think and compute numbers. And I just want to be realistic.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the relief that was requested was for a contractor shop. And that's where a contractor, you know, has their office and stores their materials. It doesn't include exterior storage and it does not include your typical carpenter shop. That would be separate relief for light manufacturing, which the applicant did not request.
So that was actually something I'm thinking, when he's bringing up this milling stuff. So we have that under our uses. Light manufacturing is what we would call like thickness planers, joiners, things that make a lot of noise, right?
Yeah. If you don't mind, I'll just read the definition of contractor shop so everyone understands.
That's cool. That's good.
It's "an establishment used for the indoor repair, maintenance, or storage of a contractor's vehicles, equipment, or materials, and may include the contractor's business office, but which does not use any exterior storage area." So that's the only thing that was requested.
Yes.
Again, if any changes occur, things start happening there that are, that are fabrication for off-site purposes and milling and things like that, if he's just limiting it to contractor shop, anything that goes beyond that, coming back here, because that's a separate special permit.
Are there any other questions from the board or from staff? So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up at this point and I'm just going to ask you to raise your hand. I'll acknowledge you at certain stages here. Hi.
Good evening. Dawn Dugan. And I own a piece of property at Six Sleepy Hollow. I'm very concerned about three businesses on this piece of property, again with the road and owning land on Sleepy Hollow, the only means of egress from Sleepy Hollow is onto Marble Way. Mr. Simpson keeps referring to his HDC approval, but just for the record, that is an appeal right now. And also, I think at the moment, he's currently in violation of C-Tech with what he has on the property now. So before you consider approving what he's proposing, you know, we might want to address the fact that he might be currently in violation with what he's got on the property now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Hi again.
Hi. Erin Myers, Sleepy Hollow. A question about exterior storage. What are dumpsters considered? Because there's currently dumpsters and dump containers on the property. So I was wondering where do the dumpsters fit into the storage? Well, there's 11 trucks, four dumpsters, two dump containers, all on the property right now.
Andrew, Leslie, I hate to put you on the spot. Go ahead.
That's probably something that should be clarified in the decision. I would say if it's a dumpster for the business and they're using it, that's one thing. But if it's a dumpster that's moving from job site to job site, or they're renting them to people, that would be exterior storage.
And contractor trailers? What are those considered?
We haven't typically considered, like, vehicles to be exterior storage.
Well, so if there's a trailer that moves from a job with ladders all over it that just doesn't move, what is that considered?
Ken, I'm going to turn to staff if you don't mind. It's a good question. I just want, right, they're, they're the technical...
That's the new shop, on wheels now. So we have to figure out how to word that.
And how does it get included in like parking or where does it go? Because I don't think it fits in a bay.
So Andrew, Leslie, I'm not sure you necessarily have an answer to it, but it might be something to consider for the decision.
When we consider, like, when this stuff comes up, like the stuff at Tomahawk and then, you know, the new project over there, I mean, in, in the old days, traditionally carpenters would have their ladders on the sides of the shop with these little things sticking out, and they just hang stuff. They have, they have, you know, piles of shingles and stuff left over from other job sites. Today, there's, things don't work that way as much as like that today as they used to. The trailer that you're speaking to is like today's shop on wheels. It goes from job to job. They set up their stuff. I mean, I've had that in my little stupid stuff I've done at my house. Guy shows up and all of a sudden he's got a shop in my yard. You know what I mean, for a day? I don't think, I think that that would be considered in the parking calculation aspect, but not storage, because it's in a contained, I guess would be my interpretation. Because if we put that in a condition, it sets a precedent, excuse me, for other shops where all of a sudden these trailers that everybody seems to have, all of a sudden turns into something that it wasn't intended to be. So I think we need to, we need to, that's something that we need to look at, though. I think you're bringing up a good point, but I do believe that it would be considered a parking space, for sure.
Okay, so you have a dumpster for your job that comes and goes?
No, that's, I was just strictly talking about the little trailer thing. The dumpster thing, I don't think that what Mr. Simpson has on that property right now is staying there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I went over there yesterday before the game. Yeah, you're right. Everything that you said is true, what's over there right now.
And then my other question was, when you say doors closed, does that mean work stops or the doors just close and you can continue to work?
I think he meant hours of operation means...
I just wanted to clarify that, because hours of operations and shop doors closed could mean two different things.
If there was any activity taking place inside the shop, the door would be closed so the noise would not emanate from the building.
Okay.
But he hasn't asked for a fabrication and construction.
Correct. So it's strictly storage in an office?
The term "doors closed" happened twice. But he mentioned five to eight, doors closed. Linda was talking about was equipment running, noise, doors closed with, in the daytime, with it, like, open for business but doors closed. That's what she was talking about.
And then my one other question was, is it five or six bays? Because I heard someone say five, but in the application it says six.
Mr. Simpson?
That could be a technical error on the designer's side. I think five is fine. And I would agree to that.
It's two different numbers.
Can the applicant answer the question? Thank you.
I'm happy to agree to five.
Okay.
Thank you.
The three that we approved at the HDC and the two in the other building.
Well, in this one right here, it says two, three paid garages, just on the agenda notes. So I just wanted to know.
Thank you for clarifying that, sir.
You're welcome.
Did you have anything else?
Nope. So we can, as a condition, it's, it's five, not six, just to clarify?
Five, five is what, yes, five is what Mr. Simpson has proposed, does.
All right. So I just, you guys aren't 100% sure about the trailers and that stuff. So I don't, I don't really feel like I got that answer because it's not been addressed ever. I'm sorry, I just didn't really...
Well, it was never...
Let me, let me turn to staff if you don't mind, because they're the ones who generally have to deal with the legal ramifications of certain decisions that are going to come forward at this point.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we're in agreement that if there are going to be trailers on the site, that the location of them should be shown on the site plan. And perhaps the total number of them should be limited. And just to touch on the closed-door issue, I think that's at this point irrelevant because we're not talking about light manufacturing. We're talking about a contractor shop, which is different.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Good. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Todd?
My name's Todd Stout. I'm, would be in, not a director, butter, but close enough. And have dealt with the issue of having people building the buildings as big as they can under some exemption that was understandable at some time and some place. And then putting contractor shops in there, and there's no, the oversight of that and the, you know, if it's going to be three businesses and there's five bays, inevitably there's space for five businesses. So the oversight of that and the design of the buildings brings that into question. The other problem I have, and I'm not saying this about you or your crew, is the number of bathrooms in these buildings should also be factored in. That the way that they're designed, there should be common bathrooms or there should be bathrooms for every unit that's, that's rentable. I had that problem in the past with people actually using the driveway right below my door to my home as a good spot to use the bathroom. And, you know, as funny as it sounds, it still to this day may occur. So we might want to just consider those things that unfortunately do happen. And everyone has great concerns about the number of businesses, the number of trucks, the number of, and, by not limiting, and I think two is a more reasonable number, but that's just based on what I see next door to me. And, you know, I don't know what, where that line is drawn between light manufacturing and carpentry shop, but I think it's a very gray area. And to condition a space that's going to be used for machinery, especially with the proximity of residences and, and we require it of a cycling studio that's going to be abutting, you know, that's kind of a, a very questionable, the, the ability to discern between light manufacturing and carpentry in this day and age. I know people that do light manufacturing out of their trailers on job sites theoretically. So, you know, to, to, to not take this into consideration now, knowing that at any point a contractor could develop one of these small spaces, or they're actually large, they're, you know, twice the size of my shop, which I, you know, manufacture. And I would ask the board to take that into consideration. I mean, it's, it's a very gray area. And I use the same machines as a contractor does. I just happen to be honest about what I'm providing, producing, and putting out of my shop, so.
Well, we also gave you a ZBA approval for light manufacturing fabrication for off-site premises. We gave you the whole shebang when you came in.
Right. And I, and I did condition the space and went through...
Close the doors when you're running.
And I have never gotten a complaint. And I have, you know, my neighbors, you know, here in the building. So, thank you.
So I can address some of those concerns?
Yep.
Right now, all the doors for the garages proposed minus one are pointed at each other within the property, at each opposing building. In terms of the use, if it's going to be a problem or an issue, I am happily to amend the application for light con, light manufacturing and storage so that there are no questions, concerns, or issues, or arguments later. It would just be easier to do it now. And then further, the bathrooms, I believe we proposed one bathroom per shop, or per building. I can't remember one or the other, but I'm happy to take whatever recommendation you would like.
That's okay. But, go ahead, Andrew. I, because it raises kind of an issue all of a sudden.
Mr. Chairman, we can't, we can't add on uses that we haven't advertised and...
Right.
Yep.
For contractor shop. So if there is going to be...
And I just want to be clear, there's definitions of light manufacturing in the bylaw, and Leslie read you the definition. It's not what individual people think. It's about the language in the bylaw and what the zoning enforcement officer enforces. So there is no light manufacturing allowed on the site. If it happens, it's subject to an enforcement order and a $300 a day fine. So, and what else, whatever else you put in your, if you are inclined to grant this and put conditions on it, those are all part of, you know, what's, what's going to be allowed. You, I think from the testimony you heard, that you would want to write this as tightly, if not tighter, than the other application that you heard. So that would mean no accessory uses without further relief from the board. There would have to be specific, the applicant would have to come back and ask for changes to that.
So just to be clear, there's no light manufacturing or fabrication for off-site purposes without coming back here?
It would require an additional special permit from the board.
And then we'd go through the doors closed and the air conditioning and the whole nine yards. So you may just do the air conditioning up front, but it may require all of that stuff. So if any equipment is running, doors closed. Building is soundproofed. That's what Todd had to do and that's what the other guys over there had to do.
I think Mr. Simpson has a question for us or needs to clarify. So please.
So I understand all of this. Quick scenario, if I have my doors shut and we're running a shaper or a table saw or anything that Mr. Stout uses, and we're not breaking the decibel bylaw, are we under light man, or are we under contractor shop at this point still?
No. You've gone into another use category that has not been...
No machinery whatsoever. So what's the point of the doors being shut?
Well, they're not, you know. Leslie said it was irrelevant because we've gone past that point.
Okay. So that's not in the application?
No, not right now.
I was told we had F1, B, and S1 uses applied for. Is that not the case?
Mr. Chairman, those are under the building code. So maybe he's designed the building for that, but that's not what was applied for under zoning.
Okay.
Okay. So are we clear or...
We are clear.
Okay.
Yes. If I want to change use for light manufacturing, I will reapply.
Right. You'd have to come back before...
I understand.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is still open. So, yeah, please.
Tom Schroeder, Nine Marble Way. I just want to clarify what kind of noises we would hear under this application, under a contractor shop. Can you give me an example of noises that we would hear? Just vehicles and people?
No machinery whatsoever. We just clarified.
Storage, you know, of equipment or things moving to another site, parking. That's what, that's all that's here right now.
I also wanted to state that we've got two businesses or two properties side by side on Marble Way. And I think under C-Tech's... under C-Tech zoning, I think one business per lot is, uh, makes sense for the area. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Hi. Hello again. Please.
Hi, Leah Cabral, Seven Marble Way. Um, we live directly across from Mr. Simpson's lot. And I was just wondering if, um, the hours of operation, eight to five, are Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday or Sunday?
Good point.
Six days a week?
So, which days?
Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday? Okay. I would propose Monday through Friday, because that's where most people work. Um, we live directly across from, from him. So, I mean, our room is right, right there. So the noise, um, and then also for, let's see, um, for parking. If he already has 11 trucks there, I'm not sure where they're gonna go, um, in addition to another contractor being there.
We just meet all the requirements once we're done building?
So how many parking spots are proposed?
Five.
Okay, but he already has 11 cars, so just...
Yeah, Mr. Simpson, go ahead.
Again, we would just comply once we're done with construction.
So there wouldn't be 11?
No.
On the property?
No, I have five parking spots, and I would use them adequately.
Inside the garage?
Correct.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so what, could I ask, what is the current use? What are the 11 vehicles there for now?
I don't know that there's 11 vehicles. That might be slightly exaggerated, but we do have a dumpster truck with dumpsters there, which is what they're referring to.
I don't believe what's sitting there right now belong to you.
There is a couple other pieces of equipment from Ted Strohny, who is using some of my equipment right now.
Which would be removed.
Of course.
And taken back to Ted land.
He's trying to establish new land, but yes.
Yeah. So what, see right now is not anything that's gonna keep going.
Okay. Anyone else on the honest wishing to comment? Go ahead. I don't see anyone else, so.
I have a quick question about the dumpsters. Did we clarify what the dumpsters, whether they took up space, uh, what they fall, under what category, as far as for business? Because, um, I believe the business that, that Russells in requires quite a few dumpsters.
And I think I'm gonna have staff reiterate what they said a short time ago, if you don't mind.
Okay, so I think what we would build into the decision is that they could have one dumpster onsite for the use of the garage bays, and anything else would be considered exterior storage, which they did not apply for. So, one dumpster.
Can actually rectify that. Uh, two would be nice. Clean wood and CND would be helpful.
Is that for the whole property? Yes, sir.
Not per bay.
And as far as vehicles for business, if he has a business there, are his work vehicles considered taking up a parking space or not?
Well, there are five parking spaces required. The bylaw doesn't say who can use the five spaces. There's not an employee requirement, so he could park his businesses in the five spaces.
And he can park more onsite if he needs to.
He has to have a minimum of five.
He has to show where the parking will occur.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm not, I'm not clear, is, how many vehicles can be parked on the lot? Is it unlimited?
If he has a space for it.
Go ahead.
Typically, um, you can park anywhere within the parking area, but the board could certainly put a condition on it, capping the number of vehicles that could be parked on the site at any time.
Okay. I think, uh, we should think about that in consideration of possibility of businesses that could be there. Say garage, working on, on cars, I mean, if you look at any garage around, you've got multiple cars sitting there and they're not moving. I think that something to do with the ability for the vehicles to be able to move might be a consideration.
That's another use. That has to come back.
Right, cause it's just con...
Okay, thank you.
There's a whole category of uses that are allowed as a matter of right, and there's a whole category of uses in, even in C-Tech, no matter what zone you're in, that are allowed by special permit, and then there's a whole category of uses that are not allowed at all. So, if it went to some sort of a, more of a noxious use, like a repair garage, that's coming back here.
Sorry?
Go ahead, I'll...
I'd like to, uh, just address the road, and considering the businesses, the businesses that could be there, I think, uh, we, we should be in consideration to how much traffic is going to be generated from the businesses. I know Mr. Sullivan offered to, to subsidize two of 12, and I think we could think about how much traffic is going to be coming from these properties. I mean, typically, I, I go down the ra, road twice a day, but a business could come and go, back and forth, back and forth. So, it would be nice to, to come up with some type of plan on how much subsidy would be given to the, to the road from the businesses. Thank you.
I, I think Mr. Simpson has said he's willing to contribute toward it, but again, too, part of that is, part of that is also gonna be contingent upon there being a neighborhood association established, so that there is, basically, you're all working together, and he will be part of that equity.
I think I'm just asking for a, an idea of how much. We can all say he's willing to contribute. He can say he's willing to contribute for one lot. Well, and he may be generating enough traffic for 10 houses.
Yep.
He's also gonna, he's also...
Also gonna adhere to most of the, if not all of the conditions that we just put on Sully's, about having to grade the road, since I don't think they're on the same construction path, of grading the road before he gets a CO also. And then you guys gotta figure out, how many of you guys are in that section, so you can figure out how many people have to contribute and what the cost of the gra... We had to do this, as he said, in Squam. How much does it cost to grade the road? How many people are involved with the grading of the road? And then you subdivide 10,000 by 20 of you. That's where you have to come up with a figure, which is why we said, come up with some sort of an organizational model, so you can apportion. Cause right now, we're just sort of, he's got a grader, he's gonna grade it. Mark has a grader, he's gonna grade it. You have a grader, you're gonna grade it. That's how everybody else is dealing with it, doesn't have a homeowners association. And some, and a lot of these older ones don't have homeowners associations. That's the problem.
I, I agree that we do need a homeowners association. Uh, I don't know if you're aware...
Can you, do you see, this is all televised, so as much as I can hear you. Thanks.
When a car drives down Marble Way right now, because it is so bumpy, I can hear it from my basement. Basically, my house is shaking. So what I'm considering is the fact that if there's gonna be a trash truck coming down the road, and what that's gonna sound like. That's why I'm, I'm talking about the, the grading of the road and keep upkeep, um, because we're, the residents on the road are gonna actually listen to those vehicles, those commercial vehicles driving up and down, whether it's once a day, or 10 times a day, there's no restriction on it. It's, it's a concern of ours.
The road is not stabilized, right? It's just dirt?
One of the reasons I believe why it's not maintained is because I have a three-year-old, I have a five-year-old, and I have a six-year-old. When we grade it, people use the road as a cut-through, coming, they, they would rather cut through.
Than come all the way down.
So, cars are coming down the road going 40 miles an hour, and I'm not joking. And so, I've got kids on my...
But Tom, you can't have it both ways. Either you, either we keep the road graded, so it's beneficial to everybody accessing the road that lives there, and you don't hear the noises, and the things aren't bouncing and bumping around, you know, suspension starts creaking. Or you don't, and you listen to the noise. You cannot have it both ways. The only other way for you to slow traffic, because you guys own the road, correct, is to, which I hate them, especially if you're driving in an ambulance. But if you put speed humps across it, you grade it, keep it nice, so people have a smooth surface, and then put the speed humps. You have the ability to do that, but you cannot have it both ways. Either we fix the road so it's passable for everybody, or we let it go to pot, which is what's been happening, because it just does. It's not stabilized. It's not stabilized gravel, it's not stone dust, it's not any of the things that people are using now to stabilize it, so they don't get, like, going out to Uliano land out there in Matticsham, where it's all the way across.
Russell's Way.
Russell's Way. I mean, you've got both sides of this coin here. You got, can't have it both ways.
Right.
I agree with you, and, and I think it's really important that we're all talking about it, because Marble Way is one way. When these two businesses, two properties are developed, it's gonna be a different place. So I'd like to, I'd like to plan ahead. It's gonna be a different place, meaning more traffic. It's gonna be a different, different road, and I'd like to talk about what we can do to actually work with everyone.
Yeah. But my honest to God suggestion to you is with this applicant before you at the moment, that you consider that he should be, can, he should be part of that association in terms of contributing. If the association doesn't come together, and you guys decide, that's fine, we're just gonna leave it as, as, as a, as a rutted-out road, so be it. But if things change one day, then you have that assurance that these applicants who are before you will be able to co, will be able to contribute toward the, toward the thing. So, I think at a minimum, it just makes sense to put that into play right now. Doesn't mean it's gonna get activated, but it's there. That's, that would be the only thing I'd say to you.
As a resident, I would love to see speed bumps on the road, and I would love to see the businesses that actually use the road maintain it. That's what I think is fair.
Well, it's not entirely fair for either one of them to take on maintaining the road by themselves. Because all of you guys use it, which is, again, takes us back to coming up with some sort of an organizational plan among all of you guys who do use it and have rights in Marble Way, that, all the way down, even past here, to come together and form a, um, group legally, and apportion out, like all the other subdivisions that are, that have homeowners, a certain amount for maintenance. Now, whether they pay double, like Sully said, he pays two shares, he pays two shares versus your one share versus someone else's half share, or whatever. That's the way you gotta do it. We can't solve that problem here. We can make him grade it perfectly before he gets a CO. And we can make Sully grade it perfectly before he gets a CO, and they probably won't get COs at the same time.
So it's gonna get graded a couple of times within a fairly short period of time. And then, but before that happens, it takes a time to build a, build both these structures. Before that happens, you guys come up with a group. And then you can come up with how much each person, including the two guys, have to pay. There's no, we can't solve that sitting here.
Can I just say something, Tom? Just real quick. I feel like I'm a hundred listening to this, because we have, we went through a lot of this, especially in Millbrook. So I'm gonna tell you a little, little story about Millbrook.
Let's, let's stay on track.
Well, it's the same exact thing, Mr. Chairman. It is, okay? So De Arana Estates goes in in 79, okay? That road was unpassable. Like, you didn't go in Millbrook from Hummock to get to the other side. You went to Matticet, okay? You couldn't get through past Paradise Drive, I'm telling you right now. So, all, every time something happened out there, well, we don't really want the road fixed. We like to leave it the way it is, even though your vehicle would be gone in some places. An ambulance, forget it. So here comes, Sconset Gardner buys the Larrabee property, fixes the road, it is beautifully graded, and we have had letters in our packets complaining about the road being graded too well. Only on Nantucket, okay? You're, this is like ringing all this stuff back, and when I first got on, I, I just, nah, so I think that it'll take shape, the situation. I do agree with you that the, the commercial use with vehicles like that versus what Sully's doing is more of an impact to the name. Forget about the, the potholes, okay? The potholes are caused by water, okay? They're not caused by vehicles, you know, directly. I think that there is some formula that you guys could work out. If this was a brand-new subdivision, there would be conditions and homeowner stuff, it would already be part of it. But we can't do that with one application after all this has been done years ago. So I think that, you know, Mr. Simpson's project is more of an impact than Sully's. I agree to that. But I don't know what that percentage is. Do you count vehicles? Are you guys gonna be out there with little things like they do in Hyannis for the boats? I don't know. But some way or another, the, a formula's gonna be reached by you guys, I feel. And you're gonna come up with a way to, to maintain the road over time. And, yeah, speed bumps on dirt roads are all over Nantucket. Okay, Linda mentioned Russell's Way. I think it's ridiculous, but they have them out there. The speed bump is actually less than the bumps.
When you were talking a little bit about the parking, it got a little confusing to me. So, all right, can he have as many cars parked? Or do, uh, or only in those five spots can cars be parked outside? Like, if somebody, if there's three businesses and there's four people that work at each business, and 12 guys show up to work and leave their cars there all day, is that accepted? Or are they only allowed five cars parked at any one time?
Leslie, go ahead.
The planning board can place a condition on the maximum number of cars parked there any time. The parking spaces on the plan are to indicate that they can meet the minimum parking requirement, which in this case is four parking spaces, and they've met that. Typically, the planning board has not restricted parking in other areas of the lot that are identified as the driveway and parking area, but they could. So if you want them to include that as a condition, and they're interested in it, then we should talk about that number.
I am interested in that. And my other question would be, is there a length of time that something doesn't move, that it's no longer considered mobile?
No.
We're back to the trailers, is where you're heading, I think.
Or other, other containers.
Registration.
No.
Yeah, Anne, go ahead.
Like the back of a dump bed, for example.
Yep.
Yeah. There's, I mean, a, a mobile vehicle that is not, no longer registered and not moving becomes essentially a shed or a commercial building. There's, there's clear case law on that, so you can't do that. That's a way to try to get around it, right? So, if, if a situation like that is happening, um, and there, there's a couple that our zoning enforcement officer has, has enforced, where someone had a truck that used to be mobile, then it's no longer registered, and now it's being used to store things. That's a violation of zoning, and it's essentially not allowed. He will give them, you know, it's, it's somewhat subjective in that it's a reasonable amount of time to fix it, to get the vehicle either in working order, or re-registered, or remove it. So you can't use a trailer...
As a shed.
A, as a shed. You would have to go and say, "I'm now applying for a commercial shed. I want this trailer to stay in this location." And then it needs HTC approval and other things in order to stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to comment on this?
If you, if you thought the final time, what it seems to seem like, or something else, and we've done free staff in the office, on the site, and that's... Could you validate conditions and everything else, including the plan in the office?
Yes.
Okay. Andrew, did we need anything else, like revised site plan, or, um, anything with traffic impact? Cause I thought that was still outstanding.
I, I think we need, um, we need to have something about the drainage and the engineering, at least based on the new plan.
Okay.
Signed off by an engineer, that that is, um, acceptable.
Okay.
Was that through staff? Is that through staff?
They would submit that with their... Right. It would be incorporated as part of your decision.
Okay.
That's where we're headed.
All right.
And can I go back to the amount of vehicles on-site? I mean, we're getting ridiculous here. They have to have a minimum of five. It's one per 900, and he's 4,000 square feet. That's five spaces. So if it's five spaces, but he designates an overflow area, were there other vehicles going to be parked? That's what we're looking for on a plan, correct? Or do you want me to say 10 or 11 maximum?
What we don't want is, Mr. Chairman, is that you can't say, "I'm meeting the minimum, and now I have vehicles parked in landscaped areas and areas that are not shown on the site plan as parking." Or, you know, I guess to have the aisles and other things all filled with cars. So I think that's what I'm taking... The concern is, is that they want to have a general idea. Is that right?
Yeah. So we'd have the five required parking spaces, Tom. We'd have the five required parking spaces, and then you would have an area designated for your trailer to back in, or your truck to back in, or something along those lines. Is that what you're saying, Andrew?
That there may be occasional parking in the aisles or whatever, but that there's not going to be...
Consistent overnight everywhere.
Storage or other things growing on the site.
Okay. Do you understand what we're saying? Okay.
So I think you should probably pick a number, or reach a number with the applicant.
Yep. Mr. Simpson, I'm going to throw it out to you.
Maximum number of parking or vehicles on the site?
Yeah.
Yep.
Eight?
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll have to somehow, you know, Andrew, figure it out on the plan. Okay.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Yes.
Currently, there are... How many vehicles? Eleven vehicles.
Yeah, we've already said that those aren't his. A lot of them belong to Ted, and they got to go.
So that means, like, got to go, meaning...
Got to go.
Like, now they have to be going soon, and then going forward until the building's constructed. What do we expect to see? I mean, right now, we're looking at a junkyard. We've got cars without license plates.
I know.
We've got... We have a trash dumpster there for residential household trash.
Let me keep it really simple, because the answer will be...
Well, this is the first that we've heard of it, so you should file a complaint with the zoning enforcement officer, and he will investigate. And that's the mechanism for enforcing the zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Board members, do you have any other questions? Are you all kind of clear, staff? Are you... Do you have anything else, Andrew or Leslie, that we need to...
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
You need to get up to the machine.
Come on up. Bill?
My name is Billy Cassidy. Are you guys considering closing this hearing and voting up or down on this tonight?
Yes.
There seems to be a clear zoning violation, evidenced by Russell's testimony and by everybody else.
What do you mean, Billy? Ted's being there?
I'm not talking about any names. I'm talking about outdoor storage.
What's the zoning violation occurring right this second, which we don't have any jurisdiction over?
There is no special permit for outdoor storage.
Right.
Right.
You got that.
And I believe outdoor storage in a CTEC area is by special permit or by accessory.
Right.
And by definition, nothing like that is happening. But right now, there is storage taken.
We just said they have to remove it. And we just said, make a complaint to Marcus to remove it.
Well, I don't want to argue with you.
Well, I don't know where you're going, Billy.
All right. Do you mind? Thank you. Go ahead, please, Mr. Cassidy.
I'm questioning the consideration, given the fact that there is an ongoing, or there appears to be, an ongoing zoning violation, the consideration of a special permit in spite of that at this particular point in time.
So...
We have been told by town council that they are two separate items. You cannot deny something. The HDC can't deny something because there's an existing violation that has nothing to do with what's being applied for.
So...
Maybe you misunderstand me. I think that this can be rectified very easily with Russell, and I think that he would probably be willing to do that. Yes?
Which has nothing to do with us at this time.
All right. All right. Do you mind? Let him continue, please.
I have nothing.
I'm happy to clean up the items in question.
Does that...
Within a timeframe.
Does that help address the concern, Mr. Cassidy, is that he will...
I don't think that I am expressing myself properly in it.
All right. Okay. Is there anything that is floating before us right now? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to make any comment? All right, board members, what do you want to do?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And Mr. Borchard, Mr. Trudell?
You're the only two people left.
That's right, but they're both on it, so...
One second, Chair.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Please, second.
The motion is now made in second to close the public hearing. Discussion on the issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I'd like to have unanimous, a pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve with all of the same conditions that we placed on Sully, with the exception of up to three individual... What are we calling them? Contractor shops?
Contractor shops.
It does not include manufacturing, light manufacturing, or fabrication for off-site premises. We got that.
Let's not get into the no's. Just contractor shop is the...
Just contractor shop under the definition in the bylaw, that the drainage and engineering and the final site plan approval be through staff, showing a maximum of eight parking spaces, that the hours of operation be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00, unless you agree to be earlier on Saturday.
Later. Well...
We could start later. How about 9:00 to 4:00?
9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. So it'd be 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, which is far more than we're getting from most of the other contractors. Saturday is 9:00 to 4:00, okay? No Sunday operation, commercial operation. Did you want to get into the dumpster definition?
I think we should include something about the dumpster seat. I'd suggested one. He requested two.
Okay. Two, but they are not... How do you want to caveat that?
Cover all.
They are for...
Anything more than C and D?
Yeah. For use of the contractors on-site only.
The businesses on-site. Okay. Hang on, there's something else in here. Hold on. Just going back through my notes, which are multiple pages. Oh, the bathrooms. Is that something we can get into? We usually don't get into the interior of the building.
No, that's a building code issue.
Yeah. But you've offered to put one per shop if you have to? One per business? One per business? If there are three businesses, there are three bathrooms.
I can do that.
No outside storage. You didn't ask for it. It's all the same thing as Sully's. No on-street parking, no parking on any of the surrounding roads. All parking is to be contained on-site. You've already got the screening plan, which was pretty fleshed out by the HTC. I think that's it.
Go ahead, Leslie.
That's all I can find.
I'm not sure if Ms. Williams mentioned no more than eight vehicles.
Yeah, I did. Location of which is to be determined by you. Yep, that's all in there from Sully's, before he gets the CO, grading of the road. Sewer connection, lighting plans meets the dark skies. No exterior storage. Management contact information for the site. Not the vehicle log. I don't know if that's relevant for this.
No, it's not.
Okay, no basement. And no accessory uses, Leslie? I think we brought that up on both of them without further relief from the board. I think that's all I can find.
Anything else, Andrew or Leslie? Yep, all right. I think we're clear at the moment, are we? Yes. Staff has said it to be yes. Is there anything else, Linda? I think that sounds about right. So your motion is then to... I'm sorry.
No, I'll say it.
All right. So the motion's made in second for approval with those restrictions that were talked about.
What about the one year? I think you're going to put that as...
A review.
I know, but I talked to the audience, might not remember that.
Leslie?
Yes.
The review after one year.
I think we should include that, definitely.
That was... We did with that with Sully. As I'm saying, everything we put on Sully, give or take, you know, the vehicle log, things like that, which we don't need.
But a traffic review, essentially.
Yep.
So we get a sense.
One-year review.
Yep. All right.
I would have to say one year from CO in this case.
Well, we have to. We can't do it from today, then the building's not there.
With Sully's, it's a little different. Yeah.
We'll include the CO language, because that's essentially when they should start operation.
Right. Yeah. They can't operate before the CO.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. So the motion is duly made in second. Discussion on the issue. If you're all clear at this point, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I'd like to have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for waiting through this, and I expect to see you all again at the HTC when the buildings come back in there.
Thank you, everyone. Okay.
I don't even know why I'm...
You have four ANRs before you at this point. 7906, 7908, 7910, 7911. Anyone wishing to isolate anything out?
No, we already get rid of 7907, right?
That's correct. So that's what we're down for.
I make a motion... It's only the three of us?
It'll only be the three of us.
Okay. I make a motion to endorse 7906, 63 Fairgrounds, 7908, 10 Oncatina, 7910, 68 Washington Ave and Mattock, 7911, Masquoduck. Why, heck is that? And Wee Weeder Avenue?
Second.
Motion's made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously. You have three second dwellings before you at this point. Is there a wish to isolate anything out?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
There's some corrections.
I need to clarify the application on 56 Hooper Farm Road for Tess Anderson, so if you could pull that one out.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Desert Island 1 Barnabas, Desert Island 151 Main.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously. Leslie, go ahead.
There's a tertiary dwelling involved in this group.
That's okay. Did you want... Leslie, did you want to discuss 56 Hooper, or we just...
Yes.
So go ahead.
Well, we still recommend approval, but the staff report indicates that a special permit is required for the second driveway, and the planning board can approve a second driveway without holding a special permit hearing, only when it's in connection with the second dwelling permit.
Right.
So a special permit's not required. It's a corner lot. We recommend approval. You just have to make the same findings that you normally would for a special permit.
Now, you're coming in separately for the tertiary? Okay.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve with the second driveway.
All right. Motion's made in second. Discussion on the issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously.
Go home.
Two tertiary dwellings before you at this point.
I know about both of them.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve both of them.
All right. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on the issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Now, you can go home.
Opposed. Ayes have unanimously.
See, once we get moving, we get moving.
All right. Let's not go there. We've got some work before, so... Next thing before us is 7770, Mariner Way subdivision to endorse the plan.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously. Stop &amp; Shop, which is 1311, 51 Sparks Ave, 109 Pleasant, they're asking for an extension to 8816.
I thought we already did this.
Go ahead.
This is for the other proposal, the Craig property.
Oh.
Motion to approve.
Yes, thank you. Yep.
And do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously.
Explain this one. I don't get this.
42-15.
Explain this, Andrew. Aren't we the ones that's supposed to be enforcing it?
Mr. Chairman, so this is sort of a follow-up from the last meeting. The easement was granted, and it just said, "We give enforcement powers to the town," but it didn't say the planning board. No one ever accepted the enforcement powers. So they've redrafted the easement to grant them to the town through the planning board, and you need to accept enforcement only over the drainage relative to the decision.
And this is that wall, plus the wall going up? Motion to approve.
It affects a lot of properties.
Yes. Motion to approve.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ayes have unanimously. Proposed Warren articles for 2016 ATM.
Mr. Chairman, page 291 is a summary of the citizen articles. There are nine zoning articles submitted by citizens that you should be generally aware of.
Mm-hmm.
The articles that we have discussed with you, and this is the same presentation that
The articles that we have discussed with you, and this is the same presentation that was sent to the Board of Selectmen, begin on page 296. So again, there's nothing to, we can go over them if you'd like to discuss them, but I wanted to make sure you had the same presentation that the board had, so I think you all have been through this enough to know that we are going to be putting the warrant together very soon, in the next 30 days or so. So things will come together quite quickly, so if there is any of the articles that you want to discuss, I've also included sewer articles, so you have at least some idea of where that was going. What? No, ours begin on two, page 296. The significant article, well, I'm going to go through them since you're going to ask. RC to CMI is a significant part of the master plan. The first article deals with the area in Mid Island around Stop &amp; Shop. The map of that area is on page 300 of your packet. Another area of CMI, which is out along Old South Road, the map is on page 303. So again, that's phasing out RC or RC2 and implementing our new zoning districts. Leslie's put together a comparison of the CMA and RC on page 304 and 305. You can check the chart. I mean, the chart is the most basic. For any of the zoning districts, that's where you need to look to see what's allowed and what isn't allowed. So I think you all like that. The two Fairgrounds Road site is page 307 and 308, changing, phasing out that significant area of RC2 to CN. By doing that, that will allow the town to take advantage of the workforce housing allowance that was passed at the special town meeting, Article 2. This is slight correction for the VTAC and VN at the Powers property at Hummer Pond Road. That's fairly minor. The Quidnet area, we've talked about implementing a change of the R20 district, which is a town district to a country district, like the Village Residential. That is included. Grove Lane is an area that is zoned for quite a bit of density, when it's in fact quite rural and has wetlands and other things, so we're proposing to increase the, I mean, or decrease the density and change the zoning there. We've talked about that for a while. Changing, again, R1 is a district that we're part of the master plan, we are supposed to be phasing out. We have a deadline on that in our, in our actions, and there's a list of properties. These are along the edge, and the idea is to make these more consistent with the ROH, or the residential old historic concerns of the Historic District Commission. Page 317 shows the Dimick rezoning from RC2 to CTEC and RC2 to R5. So again, we're phasing out that last remaining piece of RC2 to more appropriate districts. And then, beginning on page 318, there's some text, some discussions about the text articles, which you should familiarize yourself with. And that runs through essentially to where the sewer articles start on page 337. What we, what I have learned since this was submitted in your packet is 337, page 337 to 341-
Yep.
Is the Montemoy, or I guess Montemoy South, or, you know, Shimo area. So they are proceeding ahead with that.
Good.
We thought Maya Comet was going to go, but that is not going to go forward this year. Friendship Meadow View, that is proceeding ahead. And Somerset, yes, is proceeding, yes. Somerset, which starts-
I meant the down, bottom.
Yes, that's, starts on page 352, there's a list, and that includes Marble Way and all these other particular areas. And also Matticat, which we have not concluded yet, so. I know we have to discuss tonight the meeting, public hearing for these zoning articles. We, the intent is to do all the citizen and the planning board's wants from ones at one meeting.
If we need to have a second meeting, are we going to have time, or are we going to be out of time?
I think we should have, we should be able to-
Just in case. All right, I just want to make sure we've still got time on our side, if we, if it needs to default into a second meeting for additional information or refining.
For zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have none for that.
We, okay, good. Perfect. All right. Is there anything else on, Andrew or Leslie, do you have anything else on the zoning articles coming before us for town meeting?
Can we talk about the date for the hearing?
Sure, go.
Well, we did, and then there was an issue with it. So we'd like to propose Thursday, January 28th, for the hearing. And Barry, is that something we can start earlier, that we have to wait until 6:00?
No, let's, no, I think we can, trust me, I'll get the day off, unless something really weird is happening.
What do you want to do? Four?
No.
Yeah, no, I'd like to propose we started-
It's early, I mean, six?
I'd like to propose we start at 8:30 in the morning.
I'm thinking like five.
And work our way up.
HTC that day, so it's got to be after, way after four. I can't go from, I can't go from one o'clock to four. Yeah, earlier, but not too much.
What do you want to do?
I can't go 12 straight hours.
What do you, I, Jesus.
What about 5:30?
Take it so literally.
We have a long agenda.
I'm fine with whatever you want.
What would you, all right. Do you want to go? 5:30? We all good with that? I mean, I'm personally-
Yeah, it's a Monday.
Yeah, I'm going to be stuck at work. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You going away to somewhere warm?
So 5:30, 5:30 on the 28th. All right. I know you're tired, but let's get through this, okay? All right, and I think the other issue is before us, we're just going to table.
Table.
Because he, yes, Mr. Marklenger is, sir. Anything else? Beautiful, thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Well, Holly did the staff report 99.9% alone, so I think she did a great job.
Good for you, girl.
Yes, of course we did.
Thank you for this time, you guys.
Oh, God. You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Yes. No, I think Kathy's got us all caught up on that.